Good morning, everyone. Today, we have been an hour early. We fell back, but then we spring forward. It's from spring. Today is Tuesday, March 13th, 2018. It's 9:00 a.m. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Commission. I hereby call the meeting to order and thank everyone for being here with us today. Clerk Colerole.
Chairman Fabro.
Present.
Vice Chair Gairos.
Present.
Commissioner Omero.
Present.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
If everyone would stand for the next two agenda items. First one being our inspirational devotion. We're very pleased to have Mr. Ted Wireter today to give us some words of wisdom and to get us off on the right track. Ted, it's always a pleasure to see you. Thanks for being here. You are welcome to the podium later.
Thank you, Commissioner Fabro, as well as the rest of the commissioners. I appreciate all of you and I appreciate all the work you're doing to try to make our community better, as well as everybody that's behind me as part of this room. Blessings to you all. I'm Ted Wireter, a minister as well as the founder of All Will Retreat, which helps our whole community in emotional healing. I just pray. Dear Lord, great Creator, we thank you for this moment. We thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve, the opportunity to come together as a community in a time of such great division. May we find the bridges through you that allow us to find commonality and the wisdom of those differences. May we please realize that that's okay and glean that wisdom so that we can come together and make decisions in a time where our county has so many difficulties and so many needs. May we bless all the different types of supports and the providers who are trying to hold in these different needs. And may we bless the commissioners so that they can listen, come together, represent the people who have put them there, and represent that peace of allowing gathering and wisdom to be the discernment that makes those decisions. We ask that our hospital finds that discernment and light, and whatever that may be, so that we can continue to serve those in need in their time. And great Creator, we ask for that white, bright, and loving light. We also send out special prayers to the communities that are in fear right now from the Florida and other shootings, as well as other pieces that cause fear within our nation and our world. May we continue to give our children, our youth, our elders, as well as all in between, ways to know that there can be safety and that everything is being done so that we are a safe community. Please bless our community, bless our commissioners, and all the citizens within that. They have that voice to speak with wisdom and come so we may have that bridge of gathering, of decisions that serve all. Thank you, great Creator. Blessings to us all. Amen.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, guys.
Newly re-elected Councilman Fritz Hahn, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, as for 6B, the presentation of the Employee of the Month, that's not going to happen right at this time, so I ask that item B be postponed to an unspecified time in the future meetings.
May the motion be approved, Mr. Chairman, with the amendment that you stated.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos.
Yes.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Okay, next item, 6A, is the presentation of a certificate of retirement awarded to Rodrigo Rivera, our solid waste division. Presenting today will be Mr. Edward Martinez, the solid waste director. Good morning, Edward.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to present today a certificate for retirement for Mr. Rodrigo Rivera after 10 years of service to the solid waste department to do our recycling. A little history here, for the last several years, when we started doing our recycling, Mr. Rivera collected 39 tons of recycling that first year. That was in 2012. Every year, the recycling has gone up from 39 to 41, 59, to this year, 112 tons of recycling that he's done over the years. I mean, just this year, when we started off at 39 tons of recycling and it went up to 112. So I want to present this certificate to Mr. Rivera for all his great years of service. He, without him, the recycling, you know, we couldn't do what we, you know, we're accomplished of doing in our recycling bit. So after all these years of service, Mr. Rivera, we just want to thank you for all your great years of, I appreciate all your help that you did for Taos County.
Yeah, I am happy. I'm happy for my work in Taos County. But Taos County serves in the solid waste department. I appreciate, I'm happy. Thank you very much for everything. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, my guys. Of course, I'm happy. Thank you very much.
You may leave now. Right here in the middle. Over this way. Over this way. Thank you. Looking around, I see on the other one, remember it's on St. Patrick's Day, but maybe you guys can pick it up on Saturday. Thank you, Edward, and keep up the good work in your department. Thanks, Edward. Thank you. Next item, item 7, Citizens Concerns. Any citizen wishing to address the commission at this time on something that you just want to talk to us about or something on the agenda later and you can't stay and hear the presentation, we welcome your comments. We do ask that you keep up to less than five minutes. So if anyone coming up to address the commission, please state your name for the record. Mr. Lucero.
Thank you for allowing me the five minutes. I'd like to ask for a little bit of indulgence, though. I'm here to speak about the hospital and what's going on at the hospital. And I find it a little difficult to try to talk about what's going on there before I hear the presentations that they're about to make. I would like to ask for you to allow me to comment after I hear from Mr. Patton and the union representative. But I want to hear what they have to say before I take my book and off. But I'm going to be very clear about what needs to be said here if it is not said by the appropriate parties.
Is there anyone here, another citizen, that was going to address the hospital situation? Commissioners, I would like directly that Mr. Lucero have his five minutes, four minutes and 45 seconds to address this after that, if that's okay. Pleasure of the commission, yes, we see nots. Thank you, Mr. Lucero. We'll hear from you later. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Mr. Kralke.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I saw something about on the minutes, but I haven't been able to find it now. On revising Code of Ethics, is that on the?
There's, our employees, the department heads, got together and developed their Code of, Code of Ethics as we did for two and a half years ago.
So it's not a revision of the original?
No, that's correct. It's what they have developed for them to honor as department heads and employees of Taos County.
It certainly holds it up. It includes serving all equally and equally having access to county resources as much as that's possible. And I hope that whatever, whatever the road thing is, I'll be listening for what that means. I certainly don't want to see more top-down authority given to the county manager over road policy. And if you don't know if I need to elaborate on that, but if you have any questions.
Do you mean the road survey? That's an annual thing that happens.
Oh, wait. That's not a request for more speed bumps or anything?
No, it's the road survey that we're required to do annually.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing that, we will postpone then the remaining of citizens' concerns of those that came during this time after items 9B and possibly C. Next item on the agenda, item 8. A is approval of the March 13th, 2018 meeting minutes. Commissioners.
It's actually February 20th.
February 20th. Oh.
It should have been February 20th.
February 20th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, since it was not announced properly on the agenda, I'll make a motion to postpone until the next meeting with the approval of the February 20th.
I'll second, Commissioner.
Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Well, I don't think it's necessary. Obviously, today's the 13th, so it was just an editorial statement. No?
Vice Chair Gairos.
Mr. Chair, is it going to hold us back on anything?
No. No, they were prepared in the importance with open meetings to act, but it was noticed wrong on the agenda.
No.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is presentations. The first being item A, update from the Arts and Artifacts Committee. Paul Figueroa, I believe, is here to enlighten us.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to present today an update from your Arts and Artifacts Review Committee. I am currently the chair of that committee and delighted to accept that responsibility because over the last several years, I've seen and observed the professionalism of the county staff that we work with in the committee as it pertains to several important acquisitions and installations of art at your county complex, including all of the historical photographs that are on display through the facilities. So it's been an honor to work with your staff and also I'd like to recognize the high degree of professionalism on that review committee. There are numerous museum professionals, citizens who have been involved with the arts here in Taos County for many years, and your current chairperson, who is active not only with this committee, but many other arts organizations in Taos County. On August 29th, the Arts and Artifacts Review Committee came before you with a recommendation from its committee meeting on, I believe, August 17th, to purchase, to acquire, a work of art from the Taos County Adult Detention Art Project. And I'm not going to go into the details of that work, but it was presented to you in a commission meeting and subsequently with Richard Sanchez on August 29th, I believe it was, that we presented the recommendation. Since that time, I've done some review of the purchase price and it is in line with what the project director, John Downheaton III, Scripture, is pricing his work for. And after your mid-year evaluation of your financial condition, I'm here today to ask that you consider purchasing that work for the collection here at Taos County.
Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Figueroa a couple of weeks ago in preparation for today's presentation. There was money left over within the complex construction budget that was specific for arts and artifacts. So we have made a recommendation to move $5,000 into the Arts and Artifacts Committee budget for either the purchase of this piece and/or more development of other pieces. So I believe after the discussion with Mr. Figueroa, the price type for the piece has come down a little bit to a place that we could probably afford to do both the purchase and continue development of other, either donated pieces and/or looking for other works for the complex. The biggest complication or concern at this point is where we might put that. We did take a walk across the way over to the detention center to see if there'd be enough room in their lobby area and unfortunately, there wouldn't be enough room in the lobby to put that piece. So that's still the big question on the table is where would that fit within our complex? Just wanted to update the commission on that.
So now you know where our purse strings are and what to spend it all on, Chalk or Colerole.
No, I commend the county manager and the commissioners for the consideration and I hope forthcoming approval that there is a commitment financially to the Arts and Artifacts Review Committee for them to fulfill that resolution. Of course, we are keenly aware that your priorities in that resolution indicate gift and other priorities before a purchase. But the committee's record and desire to move forward and continue to place art and historic photographs in county facilities, not only here on Albright Street, but throughout the county and senior centers and other locations. We're ready to continue to act and fulfill an objective to better the lives of all Taos County residents by placing artifacts and art accessible to them. So thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the senior facility has a 1% art in public places, which is 12,500. So I'm sure at some point, rather quickly, the committee should meet and solicit artists and to see what we want to put in front of that building. So that's one more task the Art and Artifacts Committee has. And I think we're fast-tracking the building of the senior facility. When is the targeted completion date for that?
We haven't got to the targeted completion exactly. We're going to bring that to you on the 20th to review and approve a contract to start the project. And yes, there's 1.275 million that was awarded for the project, 1%, and that's 12,750 for arts and artifacts.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Paul, once again, thank you for the time you spend on this and look forward to working with you in the future.
Well, I too am very grateful for the ability to devote time, energy, and whatever knowledge I have to this branch. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, B, is a presentation of Holy Cross Hospital update. Mr. Patton.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Mr. Cordova, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update. As you'll recall, seven weeks ago, I gave you a presentation that summarized the financial situation of Holy Cross Hospital and some of the steps we were taking to address that situation. At that time, I was asked and committed to coming back and giving regular updates, today being the first of those. I'd like to start by talking about the financial statements that we have from January. That's the most recent financials that we have. January was a good month for the hospital. In spite of a poor payer mix, January is an indication that volume still has an influence on our bottom line. We had gross revenues just shy of $12 million. We've never hit $12 million in gross revenue, so we had $11.8 million. But to give you an indication of how misleading gross revenue is, we rolled off over $7.2 million in contractual adjustments and bad debt. So we ended up with about $4.8 million in payer bills. Compared to budget, we were better than budget by $137,000, $138,000 for the month. And our expenses were actually below budget by $109,000 for the month. So we reported from operations a positive line of, a positive bottom line of $162,000. Year-to-date from operations, however, we're at $2.9 million loss. And if you factor in the gain that we had from our investments when we cashed them in, our bottom line is $2.2 million loss. So that's the reality that we're facing. Just a few statistics as far as payer mix. In January, 45% of our business was Medicare, 26% was Medicaid, 26.2% was commercial, and only 2.4% was self-pay. That's something that's gone down significantly since the Affordable Care Act was passed some years ago. Our self-pay has gone from something in the neighborhood of 10% of our business down to 2% to 3%. That's a very positive thing. The challenge is that most of that has moved into Medicaid and Medicaid is the poorer reimbursement. They don't pay us the cost of providing care. Our average daily census in January was 16.5 and our average length of stay was 3.5. That's important because it's a critical access hospital. We have to monitor the length of stay and our average for the year needs to be less than four days. So we're currently well within that at 3.5. We had a strong month for surgeries in January, 259. That's 2% better than last January. Surgery is one of the departments on which we actually can make pretty good money. Our cash position is improving, and this is as of the 9th of March. We started the day with $3.7 million in cash. We've set aside payroll for this Friday's payroll and for two weeks from now. And after that, we still had about $700,000 in cash available. Last night, we received $202,000 in deposits. Last week, our accounts payable, remunerated, gone up to about $5.6, $5.7 million. It is now down to $5.3 million and we paid $900,000 against that last week. If it were a static number, we'd be able to chip away at it much faster, but we keep adding as we continue to buy things. On the accounts receivable front, last, as of yesterday, the 12th, we were 94 days. Our peak was 113 days at the beginning of February. So we are seeing significant process on the accounts receivable side. In an effort to further enhance the collection of the bills, we've brought in three external temporary builders and one external poster. As we are seeing additional activity collecting bills, our internal posters are having a difficult time staying up. So we brought in an extra person to help with that. We're continuing our efforts as it relates to cost reductions. We're reviewing all of our different programs. At board meeting last week, I presented to the board a summary of three different departments, three smaller departments, that collectively lose over half a million dollars a year. And I presented those numbers to the board, not in the effort to recommend that the services be cut, but as an example of the story that we need to be able to tell to the community, that important services don't always carry their own weight and we need to figure out a way to afford the services that the community needs. We're going to be issuing RFPs for a number of the contracts that we currently have. RFP is one of the best ways to determine whether or not we're giving good value for some of the contracts. So that's one of the steps that we're taking to look at cost reduction. And then as part of our strategic planning initiative, we're planning for conversations with the community. In the past, we've reached out to different leaders of the community, asking them for input as it relates to the services the community needs and how we might be able to provide them. We want to go a step beyond that this year and so we would appreciate input from the commission on what that would look like, how can we best engage the community. And we would, a couple of weeks ago, I presented to the Lions Club, happy to present to all of the organized groups. But I think there are many people in the community that aren't part of organized groups that still have a voice and we would like to hear that voice. So if the commission has suggestions on what that would look like, we'd be very open to that. We have had very positive discussions regarding the lease. Mr. Cordova attended the last board meeting, really appreciated his presence there. The board welcomed him into the executive session and we had what I think were very productive conversations about the lease and aspects related to it. We have a meeting scheduled for the next week or two to continue that process and then a report will be presented back to the commission as far as specific initiatives related to the lease. A couple of specific things, topics that I know are near and dear to the heart of some of the commissioners. Wanted to tell you that in February, we had one of the lowest numbers of transfers that we have seen in years. In February, we only had 44 transfers and of those, five were due to staffing or lack of a bed. It's important to note that we have been hit by the flu issue every bit as much as the community and so at times, we haven't been able to have enough staff in order to have empty beds filled with a patient. We have not had an issue where we have exceeded the 25-bed limit and have had to transfer as a result of that. And then Commissioner O'Donnell, during my last presentation, you had asked about some of the leases that we have. And so I have an update for you. We have six different leases right now. Our fire alarm system is leased, we have lab equipment, OR towers, new med camera, PentaX skilled equipment, and the board. Those, the interest rates vary from a high of 7.13 to a low of 4.88. Four of them have the ability to be prepaid. Two of them do not. So if you would like additional information, but that in summary fashion, an update as it relates to our leases. Operationally, the bid project that we have moving forward, actually two of them. One is continued recruitment of medical staff. We've interviewed an ED doctor and are planning to make an offer. That will complete our recruitment in the emergency department. We've made an offer to a general surgeon. Assuming that that offer is accepted, that would complete our recruiting for general surgery. Our new pediatrician is starting in a couple of weeks. We have one more pediatric nurse practitioner that we're recruiting for. So a lot of the costs that we've seen over this year are related to locust doctors, temporary doctors, should be resolved by mid to late summer. That's a very positive thing. We also are going to be entering into negotiations with two of our union groups over the next three days. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we'll be negotiating the entire contract. And we also are working to schedule negotiations with what will be a new unit, union unit at the hospital. to schedule negotiations with what will be a new unit, a union unit at the hospital. This will be a unit that will represent the advanced practice clinicians in our emergency department and in our wound care program. With those updates, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Commissioner Blankerman.
Thank you, Chairman. What's the total dollar amount on the accounts receivable currently?
The last that I saw was just $30 million. That hasn't been updated for about a week. So I would expect that it's probably dropped a little bit. It was at a high .36 million.
Well, that's still a good balance. What can you attribute the lower transfers in February to?
Patient mix. Transfers are based on patient need. And so, the community was assured of that, but by two days shouldn't account for, I mean, prior to this, our average has been 165 to 70. So two days wouldn't account for it. So it was just based on payer mix, patient mix.
Right. And what are your current capital expenditure plans? You still have $5 million in tax money.
So at the last board meeting, the board approved three projects to move forward with mill levy money. I talked with Mr. Cordova prior to the meeting. So $65,000 for an ED ultrasound, about $200,000 for an EKG project, and then $1.45 million for renovation of the building. A new boiler, new air handling systems, new lighting. And I think I mentioned when I was here before, this project is guaranteed to save energy costs of about $140,000 a year for the next 10 years. So all of three, all three of those were approved by the board and will be forwarded to Mr. Cordova.
Do you have any time estimate of when that money could be spent?
So the big one, the $1.45 million, is a nine-month project. So it would be spent over the nine-month window. The other two, we're talking four to six weeks. Thank you.
Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you. You said you had $2.2 million in losses. Does that include your closing down the dermatology?
Dermatology has not been closed.
And do you intend to extract yourself from the provider?
So we're in conversations with Dr. Good. Dermatology is a practice in which we lose money, and we're looking to how we might change that. No decisions have been made on that with Dr. Good as recently as last Friday. So we continue the conversation. We don't have a recommendation to take to the board yet.
How can dermatology lose? It just seems like it would be a moneymaker. Why, why discipline's money? Is it a priority issue or?
Payer mix.
Payer mix.
So the high percentage of Medicare and Medicaid that often don't pay us our cost.
And then, I'm still hearing about long waits in the ER. Will these new physicians address that?
So filling the physician with a permanent physician as opposed to a locum's, a permanent physician should be more efficient than a locum's provider. We're still working on what we call our provider triage model. Four days a week, we have an additional advanced practice clinician that helps in the triage component of our emergency department. That's something that we're looking at on a variety of levels. So we're looking at what you might think of as work adopt time, how long until the patient actually is first seen. We're also looking at, from the time a decision is made as far as patient disposition, should they be treated and discharged, should they be treated and transferred, or should they be treated and admitted? How long does that take? That's a new quality metric that we're measuring. And with the new software system that we have in the emergency department, we're able to get new data that we weren't able to collect before that we think will give us a better measure of these different time intervals.
Do you have an idea how much you'll save by not hiring locums?
So year-to-date, we have spent, I think it's just over half a million dollars on locums. Let me frame that for you. Yes, $519,812 above budget. So we actually have spent over a million dollars in locums just this fiscal year. So having those physicians under, under contract will save something in the neighborhood of half. So the salary costs would go up because there, there's a hole there, but we would save significant dollars.
And how many locums will you retain?
So the plan is not to have any.
And then, do you have any programs where you can get interns or doctors to work with you that are just getting out of medical school?
So we have two different residency programs that we participate in. In the emergency department, we have residents from University of New Mexico that they come in and actually complete part of their training with us. And I think we recently have started also with the program out of Texas. And then, we also do internal medicine. Our hospitalist and top med group, we have a couple of residents that rotate through for internal medicine.
How, how many people are you seeing coming in that are overdosing on heroin?
I don't have that number. I would tell you that the volume in the ER related to substance abuse. And so I would put heroin, opioids, alcohol, all of that together, has gone up. I don't have a specific number. The other thing that we're seeing in the emergency department is an increase in patients who have psychiatric issues, and those two often are connected.
Could you maybe give us some statistics next time on the overall people who are coming in for substance abuse? Are you admitting or are you just sending them away?
So it's evaluated. So the physician, over the APC and the ER is the initial evaluation, and then they use a social worker or someone else to also assist with the evaluation. And that determines whether or not the care can be provided locally, or whether they need transfer to a more specific psychiatric or substance abuse facility.
Can you find, are there beds when you transfer? I mean, are you?
That's a challenge.
That's why I'm asking if you're just sending them away without them being kind of walked through the system of where to go and how to get there. That's a problem. So you have a, you have a full-time social worker?
We're, we're working to hire a second so that we can have seven-day-old social work coverage. And then we're also working to see if we can get psychologist coverage from Tri-County.
So you are attempting now to, to work with Tri-County. So when you mentioned psychiatric issues, you called?
So right now, we don't have a relationship. If you go back in time, we used to. And then when Tri-County went through their own internal struggles, that relationship went away. And we then hired our own social worker and our own psychologist. As part of our cost reduction efforts, we have eliminated the psychologist position and are replacing it with a social worker position. But then we're trying to backfill through a relationship with Tri-County some sort of psychologist support.
So does the social worker follow up with these people who are released to see how they're doing and help them?
In general, I don't believe so. I think that our emphasis is finding the next level of care. And I don't think we have what you might call continuity of care model.
Is there any way you can look at that?
We can look at it. It's currently not something that's reimbursed. And so this would go back to the question of what does the community want us to provide and how will it be paid for?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Mr. Patton, thank you for coming. You talked about telling your story. I appreciate that you've taken that from the direction of this board to reach out there, meet with the folks, and find out what their, what their concerns are. I would ask that you might reach out to the neighborhood hospital clinics that I've got as well from, from the constituency of these citizens and what they're, why they're not coming, you know? So that might help as well, just so you guys can reach out further as far as reaching out to the organizations, but to citizens themselves as to why they prefer to go somewhere else and not stay here for the cost. Question on those transfers, did the calls drop? I mean, did we have less sick people? Or were the numbers still the same? We still had 100 calls. Only four were transferred. Because I think, you know, if less people got sick, then there's, there's definitely less transfers. So I don't want to see, I don't want the number to look like we're making progress. I still want to see that it's still, still a struggle for us to try and get this under wraps, but I don't want it to look like our numbers were down.
If you have a name, a name indication, if I understand what you're getting at, our total visits, emergency visits for the month of January were 1,284. We had budgeted 1,298. So we were 1.1% less than we had budgeted, but a significant percentage less than that in transfers. So part of it might be explained, as you're suggesting, by overall volume. I don't think that explains all of it.
Commissioner Blankerman, follow.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the emergency room, thanks Commissioner McDonald for bringing that up. Thank you for bringing us back some numbers, what you think those percentages are. The thing that we need is a community to overlay that is a good case management program that will follow these people for up to years. That's the only program that has proved successful in significantly reducing the, the, the returns. You know, that revolving door of emergency room and detention center. It's a small, relatively small percentage of the population that takes up a huge part of the costs, not to mention the community costs. So I know you can't afford that. You can't afford that. There are monies, state and federal, if we can just get them here.
So there are two conversations that are taking place. One, within the PHO, the Physician Hospital Organization. That's the organization that involves the majority of community physicians on one side and then the hospital on the other. And typically, it's the vehicle by which we contract with our payers. That group is talking about credit care management. This is a program in the Medicare system where it involves regular contact, monthly contact with patients. And part of their motivation is to keep them at higher levels of care, the emergency department. The other conversation that's taking place also as part of the PHO is whether or not we should pursue what's called an accountable care organization, an ACL. There is a window this May where we could join an accountable care organization. We would be partnered with other hospitals so that the number of lives that would be covered would be sufficient to accept the risk. But that's also something that we're looking at to see whether or not, not just from a care perspective, but also from a financial perspective, is it something that the timing is right. So I agree with your, your premise that this is something that needs to be done. These are two avenues that are currently being explored.
Yeah, I understand that ACL does take into account the follow-ups that are necessary to maintain and keep it from getting out of control. So I guess the PHO and hospital are debating which ACL to go with, is my understanding. Good luck with that. I'm really pleased to hear that the hospital is on board with that as a possibility for, for getting some improvement on that situation. The, the locum numbers, I don't think I quite understood. One and a half million already in the first two months of the year?
No. So this would go back through June. So our fiscal year is a non-fiscal year. It's June, May. So we've spent, it was $1,085,674 so far for this year. We had budgeted $565, so we're $519,000 higher than budget.
Well, that's a considerable potential savings over the last year. You're talking about a half a million dollars potentially over a year. That's huge. So.
And that's why we're putting such emphasis on the recruitment. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McDonald.
I would like to echo the Commissioner from District Four comment about we need long-term care for these people. District Four. Have you, have you reached out to Shadow Mountain? Have they taken anybody?
I'm actively involved in the individual patient placement decisions, so I don't know. But I know that when we have a patient that has needs, we leave no stone unturned. And we've had patients that have been in the ER for days because we can't find anywhere to place them. And, and so that's, we have actually had one patient that we admitted to an inpatient bed even though they were still deemed to be in an ER status because to keep someone on their ER gurney for days on end is just disentright. So we try and do what's right, and we'll, we'll look at any, any acceptable program.
Could you find out how many you've placed, actually placed in these substance abuse centers? And Shadow Mountain has been contacted. I know they only take insurance, but could you give us kind of a breakdown of the numbers and also if these people are actually placed or just sent away?
So what I'll do for you is I'll try and get numbers, just overall, overall volumes that we're seeing, and then a breakdown and maybe to go to top five, top 10, something as far as the sites that we use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing nothing else, I just want to thank you, Mr. Patton, for a couple of months ago inviting me to the board meeting and recently Mr. Cordova. And I would hope that you would consider continuing to invite Mr. Cordova to your board meetings or one of the other commissioners so they can go and meet the board and, and just kind of feel like maybe we're being a little more friendly on the playground. So if, if you would continue that practice, I'd, I'd be very pleased with that. So if you wish, we're, we're in help and, but we're informed.
And Mr. Chairman, how many people will we knock? Do we have, physicians are open now for that board?
She's our, our representative on the nominee board.
So three or four. One current member is considering whether or not they're going to seek another term. But BT Coleman, I'm told is not. Fred Peralta, I'm told is not. And Barney is going to be resigning, is what I've been told.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Barney Berkowitz, sir. And then the one that is considering whether or not she will stay on the board is Karen Mather.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Commissioner Lucero, would you like to take your time out or do you want to hear the union presentation as well?
Not sure if they're related. Out of respect for the union, I'd like to listen to her as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Item C is a union update on the status of Holy Cross Hospital and discussion about draft resolution. This will be presented by Ms. Lori McGuyer and possibly others that she wishes to enhance her presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for inviting us. I'd like to introduce Marjorie Cisneros. She's the vice president for Holy Cross Hospital for District 11 of New Mexico. And Ms. Martha Trillo, Harmio, Katrina, she's one of our delegates. They also work with the staff in the hospital to make sure that, that workers' rights are represented and that our interests are covered in the hospital. I have a statement to read, and I also brought a copy of the letter. I had sent a letter to all of you in February, and I don't know if you also have it, but I brought extra copies if you want. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I'd like to provide you with a different perspective on the status of Holy Cross Hospital than necessarily what you hear from hospital administration. As we all know, Holy Cross Hospital has had a share of financial problems for a number of years now and is still not in the best financial situation currently. In February, I sent a letter to all of you explaining why. I believe that not all of the blame for the current crisis belongs to Mr. Patton. The situation has not been solved under his leadership. I'm curious to know how much longer the citizens of Taos County are expected to continue to go on without stability at their community hospital. At the time I wrote the letter to all of you, it was my understanding that the hospital was down to four days cash on hand. It's a wonder it survived that period at all. In a presentation, and I'm assuming this is the first presentation Mr. Patton made, I got a copy of it, he talked about rural hospitals that have closed since 2010. He said it was greater than 80, and those in danger, currently in danger of closing, being greater than 673. I wonder how many of those, sorry, our G's in New Mexico. I wonder how many of those were either owned by companies like OR or CHS or wonder how many of those were either owned by companies like ORAM or CHS or some other management company and how many were actually community-owned. You know, if he has that information, I'd be happy to listen to it and we're going to look into it ourselves because we're very curious. So I think one of the problems, Mr. Patton talked about the overriding problem being the imbalance between expenses and net revenue. But part of the problem may be that the current hospital administrations will top heavy. There were layoffs in December, as you all remember. One example that I just know of is at radiology and lab. There's a VP for Insular Services, which is radiology and lab. And then there's also a manager of radiology and a manager of lab. And then there are lead tax. So this is probably a group of maybe 40 employees, so with three layers of management. If the hospital really wanted to cut, maybe they should start looking a little higher up the ladder instead of going to the bottom and attacking the bedside. That's our concern is the bedside. So, you know, if they eliminated several VP positions, how much money would that cost or would that save the hospital? So then we want to talk about the position of Chief Nursing Officer because we do have some concerns. When Mr. Patton came in, I believe Ms. Anna Abada was the heard Chief Nursing Officer. And there had been a plan in place, sort of, that there was a successor in the wings who had educated herself, gotten her doctorate in nursing, preparing to step into that role. Somebody that knew the hospital, knew the staff, knew how that hospital ran. Mr. Patton put out a search and he eventually did not hire this woman who comes from this community and brought in somebody from the outside. My dealings with that CNO were a little concerning to me as a nurse. I really had concerns about her nursing expertise. When I have to explain basic tech responsibilities to a chief nursing officer, it raises a few red flags. She's now, since been laid off, and they brought in, they've appointed somebody else in the interim. I have not met this person at all, so I can't comment on that. But she came in as the compliance officer. So I'm a little, you know, it's a little confusing as to what you're doing with the roles. My concern is that the hospital is also the third largest employer in Taos County, as far as I can tell, between behind the state and the county. Now, if we looked at the administrative branches of those other two, would they be reflective of the community they serve? Probably. I don't believe the hospital administration is currently reflective of the community it serves. That's a concern to me because the people in this community want to take care of the people in this community. We want to take care of our friends, our family and our community members. And we feel that we have the vast ability to do that because we know them. We know what they need and we want them to be able to get their care in this community with us, the people that love and support me. So again, I'm going to go back to a comment Mr. Patton made in his previous presentation about the ratio of Medicaid, Medicare patients and their being so high. Well, some of the concerns we've heard about why people don't want to go, don't want to go to Holy Cross, especially those that are self-paid, is there's been so many changes and they've been so rapid. It changed to critical access. They changed the EMR system, which I will tell you as a nurse, when you change an EMR system, that is a big learning curve, especially coming from a different system. And the system they got is not all that functional from what I'm understanding from the rank and file employees that have to use it. And it requires some customization and I would like Margie to speak to that because as a nurse, she dealt with it. So it presented some issues. They also changed the registration system. So what we're hearing is people that are self-paid don't want to go there. They don't want to spend the time and registration it's taking because it's taking an inordinate amount of time just to get registered. So the people that we are hearing from are saying that some of the factors are it takes them too long to get registered. They feel like there's a lack of supplies, as we're hearing from the staff. Again, it goes back to is the hospital paying its bills? So will the suppliers actually ship them supplies that they need? That's a concern. And then there's an enormous amount of confusion around the charting system. Now they're moving to a new PICC system. They're taking out the one they have and they're putting in a wider bin system. So I can't even imagine what that's going to do to the staff. So one of the things that I did talk to you about in my letter was a call to look at partnering with a different, with maybe another hospital in the state like UNMH. UNMH is the only trauma one facility in the state. UNMH is associated with UNM. Locos, they said they have one of the country's ranking rural medicine programs. They have a huge family medicine program. Their ER program ranks quite well nationally. What better partner to have, especially when you want to talk about continuity of care, being part of a larger system allows you to get that continuity of care. If there's a patient that Holy Cross can't handle, UNMH is typically where they go. They typically go either to Santa Fe or to Albuquerque. Why not reach out and talk to the folks at the NM Health Sciences Center? I know everybody's afraid, but seriously, we need to stop being afraid and stand up for the citizens who actually elected you guys to these positions. They trust you to make the decisions for them that are in their best interest. Sorry. So, you know, seriously, I think we need to stop being afraid and we need to examine all of our options. And I think where there is a will, there is a way. Rural medicine is changing in this country. There's no doubt about it. But I think we need to set the model that works for New Mexico, that works for the people and the citizens of this county, and not for something that just makes us comfortable. I think it's time for us to stretch outside our comfort zones and do what's best for the people. And I thank you for letting me talk to you today. But again, I just ask you, how much longer are the citizens of this county going to have to live with the uncertainty of what's going to happen to their local hospital? I think we need to take it in our hands and make the changes ourselves. And I'd like to turn it over to Martha and Margie. I think they just have a brief comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I just have a few brief comments in regards to some points that Lori made. When we got our new charting system, which is the electronic medical record, switched from the old one, we had, all of us had three hours of training. The people from out of state came for a week and then that was it. So it was rough going when we started because we, they stayed with us for three weeks to do some hands-on, but no one had designed or developed it for people that actually work with patients, excuse me, at the bedside. And one thing that still concerns me for approximately the last four months, I'm sure all of you have either been in the hospital, in the emergency room somewhere or had a loved one that's been in the hospital. When we need to give you medication, what do you do? Everyone has a wristband on their wrist. We look at your wristband, we have a little handheld scanner, we scan the wristband. So we know that you're getting the correct medication for the correct patient and we don't harm anyone. And in the medical surgical department for about the last four months, most of the rooms, because of the internet connectivity issue, have been unable to do bedside scanning. So I had a nurse tell me that she had 50 medications to give and she was only able to scan two of them. The others, she couldn't do that. And that makes me very concerned. In my department, when we can't scan a medication, we show it to the other nurse right away because we have someone sitting right there at the desk with me in the ICU and we verify that we're doing things safely. So that's a concern for me. And that's also a concern for all of our staff. Something else staff are very concerned about is high turnover rates. Last year, the hospital started offering a $30,000 or they're about sign-on bonus to new hires. And in the emergency room, they were able to hire six people and five of them have left already. So they took part of the sign-on bonus and have gone on to other positions. And just that high turnover rates working conditions very hard because you don't know your team. You don't know who you're working with. We also have very young nursing staff. We're hiring a lot of new graduate nurses, which is great for the medical surgical area. That's where you normally start. They're being hired in the specialty areas. And so you're working with people that you can be the top number one valedictorian of your school and have great grades, but until you get that nursing gut, and that takes about five years to develop. I still go to work. I've been doing this 10 years, 14 years at Holy Cross and 10 years as a nurse. Every day I say, please don't let me hurt anybody today. And I have that gut to know when something really bad is going to happen and when I need to get help. And not everyone has that. One of our physicians came to us the other day and said, "I know you don't normally take this kind of patient, but I need you to do it because I have a new graduate nurse working with a traveling nurse. And they're not going to be able to manage her tonight. And I think something bad might happen. And I'd like you to watch her overnight and tell the more people come in who have more experience." So that's a concern that a lot of the staff members, and myself included, are having a hard time. But the other thing is, it was about a month ago, we had eight flu cases at the same time. One in my unit, seven out on the med-serv unit. And we ran out of masks. Some of the staff could have a mask and known with their flu patients. And as staff, we don't get the flu, we all get our flu shots, but we want to make sure that we can stay safe and that we don't spread illness to other people. And that's not the only item. There are other patient care items that we've been running out of. And the person that delivers their items says, "Well, we won't have it for another week or so. We're trying to find a different vendor to get that item from." Because we can't get it from the original vendor anymore. And that's also been a concern not only for me, but for the frontline staff. We want to be safe ourselves, want to keep our patients safe. And ultimately, what I want is 100 years from now to have a thriving environment hospital in Taos County. And I want to see things continue to grow and move forward. And Taos County needs a hospital. That's the bottom line. In my other job, that's what's not really a doubt, I volunteer with the Village of Costa. I'm a paramedic on the ambulance. And I can't imagine if on my fellow Costaños, we have to take them an hour and a half to Espaniola because that's where the hospital is. So those are just my concerns. Did you have anything?
I just want to say that, you know, this is like Martha said, very important to have a viable community hospital here in Taos. The people here deserve it. And it's been here for a long, long time. And it's had its ups and downs, but it's really, it's on a down right now. That's the worst I've ever seen it. When we switched over to Evident, the computer system that they brought in, it was very quickly done. The module for the microbiology was not even built. They were building it as we were trying to get ports out and work with it. It was horrible. There was a setup. Module wasn't fixed either. What we couldn't really do was send us very well. It was all having to be done manually. And that put an extra strain on the people in the laboratory. So that transition was very difficult for us. And we're still dealing with it because it's still not working as it should. So it's really important that we get something that's working. And I'm not sure that it was really investigated completely because it's just been such a difficult transition. And last year, there were so many changes and there's changes continuing. And it's just been difficult. And I'm not opposed to change, but when you make change, I think you have to take it in steps. And we got hit with so many things all at once. And that's why I think it's been so difficult. Thank you.
And just in conclusion, I'd just like to remind the commissioners that the rank and file employees of Holy Cross are the ones that have been there through the thick and through the thin. And they're the ones that took the cut a couple of years ago and the hospital downsized the staff. They're the ones that took the cut again. You know, Mr. Patton brought up union negotiations. So let's just say, I'm not as hopeful as he is that all is going to go well over the next couple of days. We just organized a new bargaining unit in that hospital mainly because the staff are unhappy. And they feel like nobody's listening to them and we're trying to give voice to them. So we implore that you listen to the employees, the ones that have been there, like Margie Cesares for over 40 years, who's seen it through many changes and the ones who want to see it there again in another four years and see it thriving. So we thank you for your time. We appreciate you listening to us today. If you have any questions of us, we're happy to answer them if we can.
Do you recall our phone conversation after the letter?
I recall talking to you, but...
And where was I?
You were in Santa Fe.
Talking to...
You didn't tell me who you were talking to.
I did. So I just kind of got offended by your afraid comment because we, you knew exactly where I was right after your letter and stuff. So...
And I appreciate that. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. But I do know that there is some fear if they're making changes. And I think at some point, we just have to do what you did and go and talk to other people.
Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I thank you for being here. I appreciate hearing the story of the employees that make everything operate. I do want to clarify one thing. I don't feel this board has been acting like here at all. I think they've been making thoughtful decisions that are necessary for the role that they're here to play, which is the landlord for the leaseholder. And the mill levy money was a controversial situation in the sense because this board felt it necessary to maintain what they're responsible for, right?
Right.
And so I just wanted to clarify that. We have an outreach. We have looked at all of our opportunities. And the greatest thing that we've come to realize is tax. The mill levy that we have in place isn't enough to help sustain the losses that all rural hospitals are suffering from. So I hear you and greatly appreciate what you've been into the day life pack to clarify that. There's more things to be done by the entire community. And taxable revenue for the hospital is an essential means. And we're looking at all of our opportunities to do that and provide those extra taxable revenues that are needed for our shortfalls. So I just wanted to, I think this board has acted really thoughtfully. And I want to commend them. I really feel like not just as their manager, but not everyone's privy to what we discuss in our executive sessions. And I really appreciate that they've stepped up as leaders of the community.
Right. And thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Donald.
Are you still having problems with the internet connectivity?
Yes.
You still are. Okay, so that's a serious issue. You're still running out of vendor supplies?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What is the EMR system? What is that?
It's the electronic medical record. So it's...
Is that what you're talking to? Okay. And then how would you characterize the morale among the rank and file?
I can see that. I think morale is pretty low right now. That people are getting burned out. A lot of people are getting sick. We've had bad flu and other illnesses throughout the staff. Nobody wants to come in and work extra. Everybody's feeling pretty low and discouraged. And just people are having a hard time. Because I think Margie's right. We had so many changes happen all at once that it was kind of overwhelming and kind of hard for us on the front lines to really... And I also want to say, I do appreciate everything that you do for us as a commission. And I'm glad we could have this time to show you.
I think we need to have those, that internet issue addressed immediately. And how many people were laid off? Was it about 20 from rank and file?
16, I believe.
16, okay. But really only one from management, and that was just a PR guy. So you're...
And the chief nursing officer.
And the chief, yeah, okay.
Paperwork.
Is there any chance the one you mentioned might be brought back that didn't get the promotion or didn't, the local who...
No, she's currently now the chief nursing officer in Espanola. And there's a lot of our staff with her.
Mr. Chairman, also on this item is the resolution. And as protocol, I'd wanted it to be discussed before it was passed, as we should do with all resolutions. And so I wonder if you could, for public benefit, just read the resolution. I'm wondering if that could be put up on the screen, please? So if you could, it's a very short resolution. So if you could read that for us.
Do you need a game? It's you. Any better glasses?
Mr. Chair, if you have any other question, I just have one before we get to that.
Yes, yes.
I agree that we need to redo that and read it. But I have one question. When you said you spoke with UNMH, what's the relationship with unions?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't...
Or if there was going to be, is there any hospitals out there that are willing to work with...
We covered UNMH. District 1199 is at UNMH. We are also at Altamista Regional Hospital. We're also at Los Alamos Medical Center and Crystal St. Vincent in Santa Fe.
We're also at Los Alamos Medical Center, and Crystal St. Vincent in Santa Fe.
Everywhere, pretty much, but Presbyterian, I think.
Presbyterian, yes. Our relationship with management is...
They didn't like you, they just said that it's not what you did.
We were vocal. At UNMH, our relationship is, I would say, very collaborative. We, our union, so we're gonna have disagreements. But in the end, we, their management and our team come together. We're currently in negotiations there. We come together, and our ultimate goal is what's best for the patients that we serve. So how do we meet everybody's needs and serve the patients? And we work through issues with them. We, I consider quite a good relationship considering it's union management, labor management.
Good, thank you. Yeah, they didn't tell us we didn't like you, they just said they had our work.
And I'm feeling very collaborative.
I agree. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, so if you wanna read the resolution?
A resolution supporting District 1199 New Mexico and the organized workers of Holy Cross Hospital. Whereas, Holy Cross Hospital is the only general and surgical hospital serving citizens of the town of Taos and Taos County in a forty mile radius. And we recognize that adequate medical care is a human right, not a luxury. Whereas, Holy Cross Hospital is one of the largest employers in the town of Taos, Taos County. And the employees at Holy Cross Hospital are the heartbeat of the facility. Without loyal, skilled, and dedicated employees, there would be no medical services for the community. Whereas, Holy Cross employees are represented by the National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, District 1199 New Mexico, ASME AFL-CIO, otherwise known as the Union. And the Union gives employees a voice to improve their work lives and the lives of their families and communities. The rights in the workplace, including a say in their job's safety and security. Without the Union, these workers would be subject to the whims and demands of an outside corporation. Whereas, we recognize that the rights of all workers to organize and belong to a union. Now therefore be it resolved that the Taos County Commissioners support District 1199 New Mexico and the organized workers of Holy Cross Hospital in Taos, New Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, I would hope we could bring this resolution back on the next agenda if there are any changes or modifications for approval. So thank you so much for being here and giving us your viewpoint of what's going on in the hospital. We'd wanna support you any way we can, so thank you very much.
Commissioner, like I already said, but Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah, I too wanna thank you for coming here, making the presentation. It's really important for us to have your perspective. You raised some important questions that hopefully management will be able to address. I do think it'd be helpful to get some ratio of management costs to overall labor costs. I'm sure there's benchmarks in hospitals that show about where that range normally is. It would be very interesting to know whether or not we fall within that normalized range. Obviously, the internet and the Evident rollout, things that have to be fixed, that seem like it's fixable. And I know it's been tough on staff, as it has been on management. You know, the confluence of the change to critical access with slowdown collections and produce the terrible cash crunch with the nightmarish rollout. Those rollouts are always difficult, and I don't know whether that one was way out of line. But those two coming together, it should be really difficult on staff and certainly on administration too. But again, you know, it's really important for us to get your perspective. On the resolution, I'd just say, you know, that one final line, "Without the Union, these workers would be subject to the whims and demands of an outside corporation." And yet you're asking us to consider bringing in an outside corporation with UNM. You know, THS is our local corporation that has run the hospital for decades. Also, corporations don't really act on whims. You know, they can't survive if they act on whims, but that's just my opinion. Anyhow, thank you very much again. And we will follow up on the issues you raised.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Really appreciate the conversation we've had today. And I ask that our manager place you on the agenda as well as Mr. Patton on a monthly basis, or whenever possible. Also, what is your contact number?
Oh, you can reach me at (505) 690-6932.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell. I wanted to say that regarding, if there are disparities and discrepancies between the pay scale of upper management, and if it's top-heavy, that would be good data. I think I asked a rhetorical question a couple of weeks ago. Who's the highest-paid CEO? Well, that would be Mr. Patton. Hands down, of any CEO in the county, probably makes more than double what our county manager makes, and more than what the CEO of Kit Carson makes. So there is some concern with that high pay grade and the indication of all these vice presidents. I think that's an issue, and perhaps there could be additional savings with a cut in the pay scale of these administration employees. So I look forward to seeing what that turns out. And thank you so much.
Commissioner Blight.
Yeah, this is real quick, I know the chairman hates when I get so argumentative. But the comparison of a CEO's salary to other CEOs in the community is not a relevant comparison. The comparison is what do CEOs of hospitals generally demand. So I don't know what Mr. Patton's salary is, you know, on the ballpark. But, you know, it's not a relative comparison. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Gado.
I just, I think Mr. Patton's very clear. And if there's gotta be some additional cuts, then I would expect if you look at having top-heavy staff be cut first before we take care of cutting staff. You know, people have had to adjust and become interim supervisors, and maybe that additional pay rate is still gonna be cheaper than having three supervisors above. We are willing, I think that some of the discussions that we've had and currently with supporting decisions that are being made by the board need to be redressed. And it's all part of, you know, we understand that CEOs, and they carry a lot of responsibility, and they get paid a lot of money. And that's understandable. But those are the top, some of the tough decisions that we gotta make when, if you're top-heavy, just like anything else. This commission, at some point down the road, do we look at departments and see if we're top-heavy? We have to make those decisions down the road as well. So we just need to make sure that we're not taking the groundskeepers and the people that maintain the building, cut them first. Think you gotta cut nine of them just to save money. Maybe we start at the top, except anybody else. So I think Mr. Patton's probably heard these concerns. I'm sad that we didn't hear some of these concerns probably three, four months ago. But we appreciate it, and I think I agree with Commissioner Romero saying that being part of a coordinated reporter is a lot more important at least till we get where we're gonna be in the next three to four months, come up in business.
I actually do.
We'll make sure you have Rennell's information to let us know when you wanna be done. And it's a week before the meeting, we just need to get something before time clock that day. But if you've got handouts or something like that, we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I will agree, it may be an unfair comparison of local CEOs. So I'm gonna be reaching out to the Espanola CEO, Brenda Rivera, who is from the Benosco area. And see if she will disclose what her pay is. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, continue that conversation. But thank you guys very much, you always lighten it up pretty good. I'm CEO of my kitchen, and I haven't got my check yet, so don't put me in that. I don't know, I never seem to get paid.
Mr. Chairman, I want a minute for a ten minute break, please.
Can we make it fifteen, since we have a little bit of business to do? Hold on, I wanna hear from Mr. Lucero first.
Oh, I'm sorry, alright.
Mr. Lucero asked me a couple of weeks ago to make sure that we recognized upon this one document. Remember, you...
Yeah, I know you were discussing this issue last month, and I would've been here to tell you what I think needs to happen there. But the bottom line is that the CEO, along with several CEOs in this town, I don't know why they operate the way they do, but they need to think clearly. But obviously, that alone. You know Teresa, and what was wrong with that lady that she wasn't promoted here? Because of what Mr. Patton did, nurses had left this hospital, good nurses. And they've gone, they've chosen to go to Espanola because of what he did. That is something that he and he alone did. What I need to tell you is, hold him accountable if he wants to come here and ask you for mill levy money. If he wants money for me as a taxpayer, I want some controls on this man. For instance, he and Lori kind of alluded to it, but she wasn't very clear. Let me be very clear. The management of this hospital needs to reflect the demographic of the community. That executive management has become very white. And why they didn't promote Teresa, I don't know. But she, I guess she wasn't qualified. She had a PhD after all, you know, she wasn't qualified. Why wasn't she given the job? If there's something in her background that says we could hire her, she had been groomed for ten years for Christ's sake, and they slapped her in the face? The other thing is, this hospital needs to stay here. I'm getting pretty old, crotchety. But I need a hospital here in Taos. I don't wanna go to Espanola, I don't wanna go to Santa Fe. Blankenhorst is getting up there, look at his hair. At least he has. I don't think he wants to try to Espanola for his care. This hospital has been very good for my family. With serious issues, my father was electrocuted as a lifeline for Kit Carson. Dr. Rosen took care of skin grafts for my dad there at this hospital, and he came out okay. He had a stroke, he came out okay. My mother, she was a bad egg. She would suffer from seizures. One time she had a seizure, like she had the freezer open, she had a seizure. Well, the freezer was open, her hat fell into the freezer. She got a burn, second-degree burn on her arm. Dr. Pong, even as a diabetic, Dr. Pong saved her arm. This hospital has done well for my family. Now, I'm in need of those services, and I wanna make sure that they're here for me as I need the services of the hospital more and more. I've come to the hospital twice now. Once because my sugar was low, it was thirty-eight. I was in a restaurant, they moved me from the restaurant to the, my ambulance to the hospital, they brought me back. This little dog that I talked to you guys the last time, I've got her, I've got Boo in my care. She bit me while I was trying to rehabilitate her. Holy Cross Hospital prepared that issue again. So my bottom line to you is, Mr. Patton has approached you for money, mill levy money for payroll. And I believe that you ought to let him do that. But by giving him that money, put some controls on that man. Put some controls like management employees. And make it a performance indicator for him. Management employees should reflect the demographic of the community. And if you have to be specific, look at how many people are Hispanic in Taos County. Look how many people are white. How many people are Indian? How many people are black? That needs to be reflected in the management. And I don't wanna hear from him that says, "You're just getting half the story." Boom, we're getting the whole story. And if it wasn't for the Union, this place... You know, I disagree with what you said about the Williams. I understand where they're coming from, the Union. You need to hold this man, make him come home. Please, keep the hospital viable. If they need money for payroll, give it to them. But hold him come home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Commissioner O'Donnell, your motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion for a fifteen-minute break.
Second. Motion, a second for a fifteen-minute break. Sorry, Mr. Martinez, you can hang out with Pete a little bit longer. We'll be right back. Clerk Callahan.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigl?
Yes.
Chairman Becker?
Okay, Commissioners, motion to come back into regular session. Second. Motion, second, Clerk Callahan.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigl?
Yes.
Chairman Becker?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. I will read each item, and then if the Commissioner has, needs more information or wants to discuss one of the items, we'll pull that. And it'll be the immediate action taken following passage of the remaining consent agenda. Item A, approval of budget adjustment Daniel's Fund 1219-0120. Item B, approval of budget adjustment Sheriff's Department 0101-0500. Item C, approval of budget adjustment Fleet Department 0101-1127. Item D, approval of budget adjustment Senior Citizen Fund 0219-0113. Item E, approval of budget adjustment County Manager 0101-1000. Item F, approval of budget adjustment Capital Fund 0399-0199. Item G, approval of budget adjustment Fire Protection Funds 0209-1550, 1558, 1559, 1561, and 1705. Item H, approval of budget adjustment State EMS Fund 0206-1551, 1554, 1556, 1558. Item I, requesting authorization to purchase prefab bathroom concession stand for Fidel Mont Sancho's park in the amount of $163,180. Item J, approval of contract TCC-2018-116, a contract between Taos County and Robles, Riley, and Anaya for general counsel. Item K, approval of a modified grant agreement between Carson National Force and Taos County Sheriff's Office. Item L, approval of contract TCC-2018-19, a contract between Taos County and Madral, Sperling, Rolle, Paris, and SIS for bond counsel services. Item M, approval of contract TCC-2018-17, a contract between Taos County and RBC Capital Markets LLC for financial advisors. Item N, approval of contract TCC-2018-09, a contract between Taos County and Silva's Escavation for construction and erection of a metal building for the Rio Fernando Fire Station in the amount of $686,602. Item O, approval of resolution number 2018-11, a resolution certifying county-maintained road mileage inventory. Item P is approval of purchase of senior program vehicles in the amount of $129,150 per grant agreement A16-5102 from NM ALTS D through CES. Commissioners, that is the consent agenda as read to you. I seek a motion to approve, or if there's an individual item you wish to talk about, let me know at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear more on items I, J, and K.
I, J, and K will be pulled.
And with that, I would like to submit a motion to approve the remaining items on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda less items I, J, and K, as pulled by Commissioner O'Donnell for earlier discussion. Clerk Callahan.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigl?
Yes.
Chairman Becker?
Yes. Okay, item I, requesting authorization to purchase prefab bathroom concession stand for Fidel Mont Sancho's park in the amount of $163,180, Mr. Richard Sanchez.
I hope this is a really nice concession stand. It's better looking than the old courthouse.
Back to that one, the old courthouse.
Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, it is gonna be a nice concession stand.
Made out of gold.
Not quite made out of gold, stainless steel with cast... Not quite made out of gold, stainless steel with cast, uh, precast concrete, color throughout, brick face, uh, veneer, well, it's not really veneer, but it looks like split-faced blocks similar to the bathrooms across the street at Echo Park.
Is that a picture of it?
Yes.
Yes.
The new one?
The new one, yes.
That's the old?
That's the old.
And that's?
That's the floor.
That's the floor, so it's the new one.
So we have a concession stand with a three-compartment sink, uh, hand wash sink, uh, two stalls in each bathroom, one ADA stall and one regular stall in the women's, one ADA stall and one here in the men's, one sink, uh, electronic locks so that we don't have to have staff, excuse me, unlock and lock them, uh, stainless steel fixtures, concrete floor, um, and, but that's just for the building, not quite for the hookups and the hanging cap parking spaces and all the other.
So that's a quote as you do your work.
Total's probably, if this is one sixty-three, we're probably will be right at two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Staff can do some of the work, um, dig the, uh, underlying, uh, pour the sidewalks around it, um, parking spaces, we'll do a little asphalt instead of concrete, uh, side prep. So, we've gotten a quote for, right at seventy thousand dollars, uh, after looking at it, there's a lot that we can do, so we can probably bring that down to, to right around forty, forty-five thousand.
So, Mr. Chairman, what is the condition of the current site, and you can't build the same thing for after that, huh?
Um, commissioners, in likelihood, we probably could have, um...
Why is, you do that now?
This, this project was brought up to the capital improvement committee, and I did ask it, and the previous person that was in charge of it just felt that because of design fees and everything else, it was going to be less expensive to go over the prefab and get it out, um, and so that's what the capital improvement committee approved, and then I just got this a couple weeks ago, and the goal was to have an operational this summer. So, to start off from scratch, um, we probably could have an operational towards the end of summer, but we've already paid for site earth plants, you know, for the architectural services, um, delivery, even with this, delivery's probably not going to be until sometime soon. Um, it's just something that, that's, we'll try.
In your line of work, you, you look at what it costs to be built, what's, what would it cost to be built on your own or to hire somebody to build versus what you're doing here?
This would probably come in about one, one twenty to one forty, right in there, probably about forty thousand dollar savings, thirty to forty thousand dollar savings, um, that could be used at the courthouse. It could be used at the courthouse, but, um, this was the direction that the previous department wanted to go in, and so that's, that's, we're just moving forward, taking it to completion.
Mr. Colerole.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, yeah, the original concept behind this was to just do the concession prefab building, which was much cheaper than we talked about in the bathrooms in, that got us up over a hundred thousand, a hundred fold. This particular floor flat has two stalls per bathroom, which alleviates the need for renting the porta potties, or as many porta potties. So, ideally, this is what would be the best for that part, um, the board wants us to go back and look at doing it from scratch with, uh, architectural design and building it up from there if we can. It will probably not get better this summer, though, it will more likely be pushed to next spring for completion of the budget.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we've been so cautious about how to proceed with the old courthouse that it's taken twenty years to complete it, and, and here we have this. I know that, that it's relevant, that it's important as well to the community, but when we look at wanting to save money, we should consider that as well when it comes to these projects.
Mr. Chairman.
So, okay, go ahead. Commissioner O'Meara, uh, with all due respect, this has been, the former director, previous director, presented this, this whole commission, we approved this consent. I understand we tend to save money, but, I mean, we've already approved this, this does not look like, like this is moot to us. I mean, we've, we're just having Mr. Sanchez follow through with what this commission requested two, three years ago, and now it's going to come to fruition. Now, we just can't pull back because, uh, we're having hardship to look forward and try and get them at the whole house, but you were here, you voted, you approved.
I certainly not supported, it's a forty thousand dollar savings.
You, you approved this, you approved this prior.
That's fine.
And I, you know, let's be fair, don't come out now and say that if we didn't feel like it, because we all had a chance to say, uh, speak our piece two years ago when they presented this, now.
Well, I'm glad the two were present at that meeting, but still, it's a forty, forty dollar savings that we decided to go a different route.
Can I clarify something on that? So, the construction cost is one twenty, plus you still need architectural, um, drawings, so you're, you're going to be pretty close to the one sixty.
I'm, I'm sorry, what's?
What is the architectural fee on top of the one hundred and twenty for the construction cost?
Um...
A third, right?
No, not even, uh, something like this would probably be in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range, um, there's...
Does that have a warranty?
Well, this, this does have a warranty, uh, you pay for design on this, on this particular project, because it is a habitable structure, it does have to have stacked energy drawings that are part of the, uh, package at one sixty-three, um, but we also have architectural drawings for the site plan, and we also have all the utilities.
If we build it, what's the warranty?
I'm sorry?
If we build it, what's the warranty?
The warranty on it's going to be just for materials, if we have a contractor build, it's going to be a one-year warranty on materials.
And the warranty on this?
I believe is one year also.
That's something there is five years.
They might be on the paint and the finishes, on certain parts of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may add, um, being on the board of the VIVAS, we, we purchased a similar building, um, and I wish you would go look at it. Now, you hear all kinds of cracks and sounds coming from the roof and the wall areas, um, sheet rock is breaking, um, it's just not good construction.
These buildings are, are fairly good, quality buildings, are precast concrete, modular units, so it's a solid concrete, solid concrete, even the roof is concrete, it's not a metal roof. Uh, the option we asked is for a profile, so it looks like a metal roof, and it'll have to be stained or, uh, be cast a darker, darker local color to go with our, with our color schemes, our good Southland's color schemes. Um, there's stainless steel fixtures, it's a concrete floor, I mean, the total cost of the project is closer to two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, like I said, this was something that would, the commissioners, it was approved, that was the direction, uh, the person in charge of this project wanted to go with, um, or, I'm just trying to finish it up.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
I'd like to. Thank you.
Commissioner, please.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. How many square feet is it?
This one, I believe, is right at five hundred square feet, like a twenty-five by twenty.
Is it going to go where the existing building is?
It's going to go close to the existing buildings, it's still going to stay there, um, kind of in the corner where the trees goes is where it's, it's scheduled to go, and then, new water line from the town, uh, we're going to hook into the sewer, existing sewer line, we'll also have to add a grease trap because it does have a three-compartment sink for the concession stand to function correctly.
What's the old building that it needs for?
Right now, right now, I believe the old building still has sprinkling controls and some roof whatnot, it also has electrical service attached to it, and so the bathrooms only used at all, but the use more is in the can of the show, I guess is the best way to describe it.
As everybody knows, I'm too old to play softball.
Too old, you're still playing.
You still know. But, uh, it's, it's a great league, it gets so much, uh, use by the community, and, um, and we can get those out of town, it's a very popular, it's going to be a good addition. Looks like high quality to me, uh, so, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I, I just want to say I'm excited to get this done because I see it as a form of economic development, that when people come here, uh, right now, it's kind of an embarrassment, the current facility, so I'm excited, I think it will, uh, be good. Uh, also, there was some talk about continuing designing Philomeno Sanchez, extending the fields, whatever, and I know those documents, because I looked at them, were in the current, uh, former director's office, so I, at some point, I'd like to revisit tho, those designs that were already done many years ago, related to, I guess, extension of the baseball field, how, what else we can do to make that a location we can be proud of. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I, I would like to close with that with you, because I was, was, what I had the original funding for that, so it means a lot to me.
So I'm hoping we can locate those documents?
Uh, I actually got a copy of Doug Patterson, Doug Patterson was, uh, the designer of the ones working, and so, so I'm hoping we'll be able to.
Pleasure to the commission.
Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll link a motion to approve authorization to purchase prefab gated bathroom concession stand for Philomeno Sanchez Park in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three, one eighty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize purchase of prefab bathroom concession stand for Philomeno Sanchez Park in the amount of, clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Meara?
I guess I will have my name on it, no.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigl?
Yes.
Chairman Vander?
Yes. We'll put your name on it.
Okay, item J, approval of contract TCC two thousand eighteen dash one one six, uh, contract between Taos County, Robles, Rialto, and Anaya for general counsel. Commissioner O'Meara?
Um, can this?
Mr. Chairman, could I take the lead on this one?
Sure.
Um, could we first get an update of how many applications we had, and I take it they weren't satisfactory, but I was just curious, what was the final count, uh, and how was it determined?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we have two applicants this last round, one of them we've seen before, we actually interviewed, and other applicants, quite inexperienced, um, straight out of the hospital, so we have, um, decided to continue on with the relationship. We have a Robles, Rialto, and Anaya, after the RFP, and the amount on here, and the term is through the end of next fiscal year, so it's over one year, it's from this point to the end of next fiscal year. Um, I believe either, even if we bring someone in, it would be valuable to have a firm available to us, um, for mentorship or for, um, the experience that they bring to the table, so...
Will we be bringing someone else in in addition?
Ideally, would be great to have an in-house legal, uh, we have not found that right fit, as I've talked to the board in the past, it's really, I think, important for us to find someone that is going to be a good fit for the county, and I think we can continue to look, uh, but at this time, we just haven't found that right fit for an in-house attorney. And so we've had a pretty good relationship with Robles, Rialto, and Anaya, more specifically, Mr. Audio, um, the experience Mr. Audio brings to the county is immeasurable, I get very quick answers to very difficult questions, usually from experience that he's had, so, uh, we do value, um, the experience Mr. Audio brings to the table, and I just want to provide all options for the county and our commission.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have looked at the scope of work, contractor shall provide legal representation, consultation, and advice to county as general counsel on an hourly basis, as directed by the county manager. I would like to add language, as directed by the county manager and county commission. I understand, in the past, I have moved forward with a document to create a behavioral health task force, I had brought that up several times, never got a response, so now I have learned my lesson to not, uh, seek out counsel attorney over a resolution that hasn't been approved, so I get that, but I still want, would like that language, that county commission is included in the scope of work, uh, so I'd like to have discussion, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion and we approve the contract with that additional language.
Do I have a second?
I'll go in a second.
Change, a motion and a second to approve, um, contract TCC two thousand eighteen dash one one six between Taos County, Robles, Rialto, and Anaya for general counsel, the addition of item one, scope of work, um, as directed by county manager and commission as presented.
And the county commission, so we're, we're clear, it's not one commissioner, uh, doing that, but to be able to call and take advice and have that in the language.
Mr. Colerole.
Um, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I appreciate the suggested change, I think that's fine, I ask simply that we still filter all the requests through myself or Mr. Shannon, so that we have the ability to cross-check the invoice at the end of the month, and we know that what we're paying for is what you asked for, so that would be my only request in addition to that, is that it's still a process where, um, for management, yes, for checks and balances.
And that's why, but let me just say, what if I have a confidential matter, uh, I don't need to necessarily disclose the matter, but just to let you know, I'm going to make a phone call, is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blankenhorner?
Yeah, um, so, I don't think the language should, uh, should read that the county attorney works as directed, um, by, I think that, you know, like, uh, our manager said, the direction should go through him, our communication, uh, with county manager, uh, would then result in any direction to the county attorney. Now, at the same time, we have to have access to the county attorney, I want to be able to ask him or her questions anytime and, uh, consult, but I don't like the framework where any of us can give him or her, uh, a specific direction, I just think it's, um...
It's not what I'm asking.
Okay, well, we're good now.
No, I, I hear you.
I'm just trying to clarify, I'm not sure that we disagree here, um, so, I don't know how that language will read, but that's where I'm at on it.
You don't have, okay.
Randall, do you want to restate it on all of this?
I would prefer more omnipotence for me, but if you want to put these limits on me, that's okay, too. Um, just, I was trying to be funny, I'm sorry.
I got it, right? Happens to me all the time.
It just takes a little bit longer.
But, um, yeah, um, so, no, the, the issue, uh, is, is, it doesn't hurt one way or the other to add, or in the direction by the commission, because obviously, I, I work for the commission through the manager, I work for both management administration, the independent elected officials, and the commission, so I, I, I have no, I have no, um, feeling about which is the preferable way to go, uh, because ultimately, it is direct to me, uh, in any event.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell could restate her.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, did I hear that the commissioner from District Four would like the language of directed change to something else?
No, it's directed by the county manager, um, so I'm just...
All right.
Go ahead, you were...
All right, so I, again, make a motion.
No, the motion has been made, just please, just make your motion.
That to insert, after county manager, as directed by the county manager and Taos County Commission.
Okay, that was the motion, and then what's seconded, so we've restated the motion, any other, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Vice Chair Geigl?
So, I guess maybe I'm the one that's confused, but I want to make sure that I hear correctly what Commissioner O'Donnell's saying, so if we're going to, if, if there's any action or any direction that we're going to give the attorney, it's going to be through...
The body.
The body, in an action item or direction through a meeting, correct?
Yes.
And if we have any concerns or issues for our district that are, that can be tidied up through, um, discussion with the attorney and the manager, we can do those independently?
Yes.
Okay. I, that's, I'm, I'm comfortable, and I like that idea as well, I don't want to limit any commissioner, myself.
Oh, yeah, she's nice to me than Randy.
Mr. Chair and commissioners, just, just to clarify, if any of you call me with a issue about a conflict of interest or some other confidential matter, uh, obviously you can do that anyway, and what I will report on, then if you let Leon know that you've done it, then you'll be able to check it, and I will simply say on my, on the bill... then you'll be able to check it, and I will simply say on my, on the bill, that I have discussed a confidential matter, so that it won't be shared.
Thank you.
Good job, Commissioners. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Pepper.
Yes.
Item K is approval of modified grant agreement between Carson National Forest and Tus County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, this is what we passed last year and I think the year before. Is it?
Yes, Sheriff, here for the record. Previous contract was $15,000, it is specified for overtime patrols on the forest lands, be that in Carson and Tus County, of course, which limits our jurisdiction outside of that. This year, through negotiations, of course, I asked for 100% increase of that, I got 20. It went up to $18,020.12, and respectfully ask you to pass this, so we can get started. It's going to be a bad fire season, and I think we're going to need to focus our patrols out there to be very proactive, preventing human errors and causing a clutter.
Good job, I'm giving you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, move for approval, just wanted to know as to what progress has been made through these efforts, through these agreements with the Forest Service.
Let me get the second.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the modified grant agreement between Carson National Forest and Tus County Sheriff's Office. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So just elaborate on what has happened, what has occurred as far as this agreement and the service that we're providing, the sheriff's office is providing to the Forest Service.
Yes, we provide patrols, as you're aware, they have known or very limited availability of law enforcement for the Forest Service in northern Mexico via Tus County as well, unless there is an inventive fire or something that draws an engine from outside of this district. If this is for overtime patrols, for us to work in conjunction with them and take necessary enforcement action when we find it, with woodcutting or plant fires, and especially under the perception that we're probably going to be going into some kind of stage fire restrictions this year in the forest, I think it's a given, we'll probably reach a list of one, I don't know if it'll go beyond that, it's a little early to predict, but we started this last month, negotiations, to try and get this in place. And as this society goes to the Forest Service, it's not formalized, and I can't start building to that until they actually sign it, so we wanted to give ourselves a little buffer early.
In my district, we have León de Canyon.
Yep.
What kind of security are?
We're not to say security, we're proactive patrols to be seen, to check.
The lot is outside on León de Canyon.
And on a daily basis.
Sheriff, can you provide patrols there, what has happened as far as patrol in that area?
That's one, that's one area of a very large forest that they're asking us to patrol. The one thing I forgot to mention was also this, this ability to check the ATVs, highway vehicles riding into restricted areas, closed areas, and things like that as well, just want to bring that up since I remember. We won't focus on any one particular area, we will be sporadic in focusing León de Canyon, focusing northern Carson's, Mulett, Three Peak areas up in Red River are the two of the concern. Of course, anything that surrounds any of our ski areas, because it would be devastating to lose those forest lands as far as an economic standpoint. So, it's going to be limited, and honestly, $15,000 is a lot of money, but it's not going to go real far.
But I would continue to ask you to provide a little bit more patrol, patrol in the León de Canyon area. A lot of illegal dumping still continuing there, as if you've talked to us all, waste people on a daily basis. There's, there are people that go there, there are people that poach in the dump the carcasses along that road, on a daily basis, it happens.
And all their trash.
And all their trash.
Yes, sir.
So, we'd really like for you to consider a little bit more patrol in that area.
And it is a huge area that can be heard, you know?
Yes, yes it is.
It's the Danish lake. And it's right in Pot Creek.
Yes, I was going to actually mention Pot Creek, and then I was going to mention that we don't have our contract yet, but we've also negotiated with PLN for the Dilar camp areas, John Dunn camping areas, as well as Wild Rivers. It does not look like I'm going to get an increase, we're going to stay at the $7,500 for those patrols. Collectively, we're going to do the best we can, we obviously can't be everywhere at once, but we'll continue to do the best we can.
And Commissioners, that's our interface, because there are multiple residences up that road.
There are a lot of people that live up there.
Yes, sir. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, just real quick, we do get supplemental calls up there, there's a little pattern to it, but we do get calls to León de Canyon area.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know that the Forest Service will be getting another law enforcement officer come June, which will help on this side of the mountain. And Sheriff, if there's any way you can meet with the Forest Service to help educate your deputies on illegal woodcutting, I've heard of an incident where someone was cutting wood illegally, but they showed a permit, and they duped one of your deputies because of the, you know, they were cutting in December, and they showed a permit that you don't cut wood in December, it's forbidden, there's a certain specific time for green wood. This particular gentleman, from what I heard, was cutting juniper, huge beautiful juniper trees in that area. And so, if you could at least meet with the Carson Forest Supervisor or the Camino Real District, so they, so you can understand, because these people will show you permits that are not valid, and continue to do illegal things. I appreciate any citations you can do on forest lands with people who are cutting illegal green wood, and I'm glad the county manager's back, because I was going to make a joke, but he better watch out, because he'll be, you'll be up in troupes too.
There you go. Wouldn't close, sir. I need to respond to that, but I don't want to try to not take offense to what you just said, but you need to understand the true facts of what that call was. Please, Commissioner, leave half of what you see and less of what you hear. It was inspected, it was documented, it was later found to be an inappropriate wood permit, and that information was forwarded to their LEO.
Oh, well, thank you. All right, I stand corrected, thank you.
Cool. All right, any other discussion on item K? Which was made to accept the modified grant agreement between Carson National Forest and Tus County Sheriff's, hearing no further discussion. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Pepper.
Yes.
Thank you all. Item 11, market matters, first is item A, it's our second quarter investment committee meeting report and investment monthly report, this will be presented by our treasurer, Miss Susan Kate Trivia. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, viewing audience, I am so happy to be here today. I had just caught another of those viruses, and so, you've, you know, you've been so sick, it just feels so good to be at work, it feels so good to be up and around, so I'm very grateful to be here. We had our investment committee meeting on January the 29th, 2018, at 2:00 or 2:30 PM, and the location was in the executive conference room, the members in attendance, for myself as the treasurer, Paul Stansfield, the chief deputy treasurer, Mary Agonzo, the accountant one, was absent, Leandra Cordova manager was present, Lupi Martinez, finance director, was present, Jim Fanro, commission chair, was present, Rose Vargas, US Bank, main office manager, was present. Item one, Tus, I provided a copy of the Tus County Resolution 2017-29, and to basically outline exactly the representation in the investment committee. And so that was item five, investment committee, alternates were appointed. So, and again, for transparency purposes, but also, I want the board of finance, and that is the commission functioning as the board of finance when it comes to the investment committee, to be fully, fully staffed, I want the representation to be here. So we, the, the board of finance will appoint an alternate for Jim Fanro, commission chair, and I understand that the alternate is Commissioner Tom Blankenhart, and Lupi Martinez, finance director, her alternate is Jonathan Montoya, the finance accountant two, Rose Vargas, US Bank, office manager, the, her alternate is Dennis Garcia, relationship manager, and Leandra Cordova manager, his, Brett Hamel, is the assistant manager, will be the alternate. And item two, the second quarter report was presented by myself, and I provided for the membership, the, the announces that I do, the different forms that I, that as the treasurer, I look at, and I presented all of that information to them. And the second quarter DFA report was presented by Lupi Martinez, and a copy of the treasurer's financial report and second quarter DFA report shall be provided to the clerk's office, I shall make a full packet of what I presented to the investment committee, and they were, but if at any time you would like a copy, I would be very glad to provide that for, for the rest of the, of the commission, not just the, not just the representative or the member of the board of finance. The third was the investment report as presented as prepared by Paul Stansfield, the chief deputy treasurer, and Paul presented the investment report, and there were two maturing CDs rolled over for another, and I had their on there 18 months, but it's not, it's the six months at higher yield and at, and at a higher rate. And the, and item number four is the Morton Capital Markets, the Financial Industry Regulator Authority, they provided us a website, a link to where you can go in and see what they're, how they're regulated, and how they, they are very, very qualified to assist us in the investments that we need. And I want you, I would like for you to look at the investment report, and I just wanted to just point out that, that as the investments are in the ladder are just rolling off, and they're, they're just rolling off to a higher, to the higher yield, so the last one that we had was 0.75, and it went up to a 2.4. So that is, that is very significant, and so it's producing that yield as additional monies, the, the year-to-date interest that has accumulated for the monies that are in the general fund are the, maybe $250,000, we, for the second quarter, is $27,426.70. And we have monies in there now, which again are currently, have been invested, and that's the USDA Fund 411. And again, they're at the 750,000, the 250,000 intervals, so they're, they're going to be going up like we have that, the Citizens Bank, and that, for the second quarter, what is going to be the 220, 2, February the 2nd, 2018, and again, that one is going to be recorded on the second quarter, that it was going to go up by a whole business point, so that is, that is good, instead of 1.35, will be the 2.35. So again, and then the, the next one is the money from the Indian Fund, then again, we invested a million dollars, and so far, we've, the yield has been, the interest has been $1,729.10. So again, if you look at those states, it will be going up, you know, so, and as they go up the ladder, there will be further yield, so we anticipate on the, very good third quarter report. So it's been, it's been a good experience for us to learn, to learn and to understand what we're doing, but it's a yielding session, very, it's been very fruitful in the decisions that we made, and I just appreciate the, the, again, the collaboration that we have, because it's a good time for the, as we said in the investment committee, to have this, the relationship with the manager, to see the liquidity, you know, and what he sees, his input, the finance director, and again, the board of finance, and that's why I'm really kind of trying to pull this together, and so, you know, we need just one page and just totally educated, and again, the perspective. I learned something this morning just from Commissioner Blankenhart, and I'm going to go and research that and make sure that it is what it is, of what, what we're doing, and it's, it's again, for the benefit of the people of Tus County and our general fund and our funds, to, to yield that additional monies. Thank you so much, are there any questions?
No, this, Yanar, this is, you make more in one quarter than you made all of the last two years combined.
Correct.
I just, I'm just grateful for the leadership of our county treasurer, for getting us to this point, we are certainly doing much better in our investments, and I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. Okay, item B is village of Tus Ski Valley, tax increment development, district senior lien taxable drawdown, tax increment revenue bond services, wow, 2011, required list of closing documents provided, we brought this to the commission so that you would see what was involved in the tin, and now that they're wanting to draw, required my signature, but since it's something we all hold around, I felt that we should bring it back here, just to let you know that they're at the point where they're actively drawing.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is really driven by the TIP board, as the county is a participant in the agreement with our property tax obligation, we do have to sign now that they're ready to issue the bonds. So essentially, what this is, is the packet that is going to put the bonds out to the market, it's about a $44 million bond sale, because I understand it, the original list of projects was provided back in 2015, the first time we took a look at this, it's the same list of projects, and I had a couple of conversations with the attorney for Ski Valley and their bond counsel, my big question was that they were pledging our dedicated property tax, they said they were not, this is all being pledged by the GRT, which we do not pledge, so the property tax that we have dedicated can be used to pay down the debt, but it's not going to be pledged for the debt. So we do recommend approval, it's pretty straightforward, what is, what I, in my mind, what is good about this is a lot of the projects that are identified are not just within the TIP, there's going to be projects from Arroyo Seco up to the TIP, within the county limits, so GRT associated with those projects should be coming to the county.
Mr. Chairman, I am so confused. I thought we pledged 35% of our property tax, of the Ski Valley's property tax, now, how, you're not going to use it, or they're going to use it for some balance, or?
Commissioner O'Donnell, let me see, they are still going to use that to pay down the debt, as we have obligated to them. They're pledging the actual security for the bond, the pledge is only the GRT, that Tus Ski Valley has contributed, and the state has contributed, so the pledge itself is only GRT. It is a little bit of a distinction, but like, so using this complex as an example, we pledged many different increments of GRT, we didn't pledge property tax, but if, at the end of the day, we came up short, they would accept payment of any kind to make us whole on our payments, and that's kind of what the premise is here of the, on the TIP.
Okay, and then on this page 215, it has the amount, classification, and who the payee is. Who is the payee? Is it the Ski Valley, or is it Mr. Bacon? And so, I, would that where you see on page 215, that's blank, that... And so, would that where you see on page 215, that's blank, that the amount would be $44 million? And then, who would be, so, if I understand this correctly, did Mr. Bacon front the original infrastructure development of $44 million? Then he's going to get it back? So, is that, who would be the payee in this, in this document?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I might best answer the question. I'm not a bond counsel, but the way I read this is that there's an opportunity for multiple vendors to be paid through this. So, maybe that then, Mr. Bacon is certainly one of those that, well, his company, I'm sure, would be through his incorporated identity to be able to be reimbursed for allowable expenses that were fronted. As I understand it, those I read through, he's not asking for that yet. It's more to fund the infrastructure improvements they intended to do all along, basically the natural gas, the bearing of fiber, bearing of their electric. That's the biggest portion of the work that I believe they intend to do sooner than later. And so, yes, he, cancer ready, he does have the ability to get paid back, and they call those a sponge bond, but there's more to it than just that. He won't be the only recipient of the bond proceeds.
They've already done those improvements, correct? So, it's completed?
This, that's what he would get paid back on, those things. Because yes, as you mentioned, he was fronted. It was fronted, so they'll drop back. But there's other projects that haven't been completed yet that are related to that, that are within those parameters of the original request back in 2015, so.
So, is there anywhere we can extrapolate that 35% of property tax that we're giving to the Ski Valley, but now we really aren't yet? Our, what that dollar amount is? So, we're not giving them that property tax, so we're retaining it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, the property taxes isn't required to be paid until it's triggered. So, there's a baseline. We created a baseline in 2015. And so, as soon as the property tax evaluation got above the baseline, then we were triggered at 35% of just the increased amount. That, I think, was triggered in this last property tax year, and I don't, we made any payments yet. I don't believe we made any payments yet to Taos Ski Valley. It'll probably be in this next tax year that we'll be told that we have to pay our 35% of that incremental increase. So, I can tell you exactly what it is, but we know exactly what that's going to be, but we haven't had to pay any.
You paid to the Ski Valley, not Bacon, see the?
No, we paid to the TIT. We paid to the.
The TIT, okay.
The TIT, which is a separate board, which does include most of the Commissioner, Councilmen, or councilpeople of Taos Ski Valley, including representation from the State Board of Finance. They're also sitting on the TIT board. That's who is getting our.
I think I understand a little bit more. Thank you.
It is very complicated.
Anything else? Alright, and we will move on to item 12, Resolutions and Ordinances. Item A is Approval of Resolution 2011. We're not going to put it on the table for a vote. I think it just requires the chairman's signature. I just wanted them to know that it was happening. Item 12, Resolutions, Approval of Resolution 2018-10, Resolution Authorizing and Directing Publication of the Title General Summary, Time, Date, and Meeting Place for Discussion, Consideration, and Action Upon Proposed Ordinance 2018-1, An Ordinance Amending the Repeal or Reauthorization Election Date for the County Local Option Grocery Seats Tax. This will be Mr. Cordova and Mr. Montalero, and the Attorney for NCRTD, Mr. Peter Dwyer.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll just, this is something we talked about. We've kind of had some limited discussion on this in past meetings. We did have a bit of a standstill until we actually were able to have a sit-down meeting with Tax and Rev. We did that, say, in the fall. I can't remember exactly. A couple of months ago, we did have a sit-down meeting with the Attorney from Santa Fe County, Attorney from Las Alamos County, myself, Mr. Dwyer. Basically, did get, I guess, permission is the best way to put it for Tax and Rev, to take this approach to, what we're essentially asking is just to remove dates of the election at this point. So, it still goes out to the voters. The voters still have the final say. We're just giving the NCRTD the ability to act a little sooner and more often. And Mr. Dwyer would answer any technical questions if there is any.
Sure, just let me add on to what Leandro said, that, oh, my name is Peter Dwyer and the In-House League of Counsel for the North Central Regional Transit District, which is the Blue Bus people. And of course, we run the Taos Chur lineup. Just add on to what Leandro said. We had a meeting with TRD because a number of the county members, there are four counties in the district, we were above Taos, Santa Fe, and Las Alamos, and a number of them had concerns about these ordinances that you're being asked to request publication on today. They were, they were concerned that Tax and Rev Division was saying that we could not pass these ordinances because they were amending something that was passed by the electorate. But all we're asking of you today is that you pass, that you go out and publication on an ordinance that you'll subsequently hear that will change the dates. All that changes the dates that we can have an election. And the goal here is to have an election this November, November of 2018, to see whether or not the electorate wants to keep the tax in place or leave the, or have the sunset left in place. The sunset is 2024, so if it fails in 2018, we'd like to have the opportunity to come back in 2020, 2022, and see if we can continue to exist, because this is the primer revenue stream for the NCRTD. If the revenue stream dried up, probably the NCRTD would, well, there'd be some drastic change, because that's our main revenue source. So, all this would be today is just telling the county manager to go ahead and publish the ordinance. That would mean that a subsequent public hearing, you could deliberate on and improve the ordinance, and we could potentially have our election this fall. We'll come back to you this summer with two more ordinances, then actually do the amendment and call for the election. So, that'd be sometime midsummer, and then hopefully, if all goes according to plan, we'd have the election this November. And then hopefully, the election passes and our tax is secured, and we have the ability to pledge our revenues to do capital projects that right now we can't, honestly, we can't do them because our revenue stream is too uncertain in the future. So, this is the first of three steps, but it's, it's pretty straightforward. If there are any questions that we have to answer.
Commissioners, this has been in the works. The board has been talking about this probably the last two years, two and a half years. I feel comfortable with it now that Tax and Rev has given them blessing. I've also had Renell email you a copy of their most recent audit and their CAFR and their financials. So, you have that in your email to review, in case you're wondering. It'll show you where the grocery receipts come from each of the county members, what their holdings are. It talks about their capital improvement plan. If there's any other information you need regarding NCRTD, you just kind of let me know. They, they'll provide anything for us that you might need before we make these decisions and inform the public. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 2018-10, Resolution Authorizing Directing Publication of the Title General Summary, Time, Date, and Meeting Place for Discussion, Consideration, and Action Upon Proposed Ordinance 2018-1.
Okay, item motion in a second. Item A is stated the motion's made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Slegman?
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a question, because you know I'm getting old and my memory isn't as good as it once was.
You're not quite as thoughtful.
So, right. But you're not going to be asking for a rate increase. This is just an extension beyond the current sunset.
That's right. This is part of the rhetoric even that. This summer will come with those ordinances where we actually remove the 2024 sunset. That would be the final, the final action that we're seeking, and we'd not even remove all the tax increases. It's just leaving the status quo.
If I could add, Peter, if they wait till when the vote was scheduled in 2022?
2023, I think that's the performance.
Then, a lot of people that issue grants and stuff when they don't see a long enough light at the end of the tunnel, they might be reluctant to give them their grants because there's no certainty that they're going to be here past the grant period even for replacement of buses. They're, they're trying to get some shop done and things like that. Without the certainty of this being extended, they don't have very much, they don't have real good chances to get those grants if they're not needed.
Right, you're going to need some long-term security.
It is a free service for our residents.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? You have a motion in a second? Further call roll.
Commissioner Omera?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lincolnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Well, don't think that you sat here and wasted your morning. You got to learn about our hospital, our finances, and a few other things. So, we thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see you. Item B is Approval of Resolution 2018-13, A Resolution Authorizing and Approving Submission of Completed Application for Financial Authority to Refund Certain Outstanding Obligations to Taos County During the Intend of Work. County Commissioners to Consider for Adoption and Ordinance, Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of Loan Agreement for the Purposes of Financing the Project, Directing the County Manager and County Clerk to Publish Notice of Intent to Consider an Ordinance, Authorizing Such Loan Agreement in a Newspaper of General Circulation Within Taos County. Mr. Cordova and Mr. O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mrs. Martinez had to leave for a doctor's appointment, so I apologize. She wasn't able to present this, but essentially, I had talked to the commission a few meetings back in my line of report about our opportunity to refund and refinance the debt on this complex. So, that's what we're doing here. We're asking the approval of the resolution. The resolution authorizing us to complete, to submit a completed application to the Finance Authority to be heard and considered at their next Finance Authority Board Meeting, March 22. And then, pending approval of the project at that level, we would then request adoption of an ordinance or intent to publish regards to the ordinance in a public hearing. So, I stand up for any questions at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, what do we currently owe on the bill?
And I apologize for not getting the numbers I have on them. We'll get to you directly after the meeting. We roughly still owe about $32, $31 million, I believe, on the bill.
And how much have we paid off, and how many years has it been?
It's been ten years, and that's why this is being triggered. We have the ability at ten years to do an early payment and pay off the bonds. It is advantageous for us to do that. We do stand to save roughly $2.8 million total on what we would be paying. The other advantage to what we're doing and the way we're structuring it is, as I mentioned earlier, we had a lot of different increments pledged to keep the debt or to have the debt be able to service what we needed. We're going to be removing a couple of those increments to free them up for other projects as we go towards the need for our fleet building, things like that. So, in the short term, we will see extra cash flow on those increments that we're no longer pledging directly to the debt. So, we'll be able to replenish some of the money that we used to pay off the property across the street, the Pervich Road. We'll be able to replenish that based on the free cash flow that's going to come. And then, when the time comes that we're going to need to build the fleet building, I'll come back and ask if we could pledge those increments for that day at that time.
And what's our monthly, quarterly, what is it?
It's monthly, I mean, actually, no, we pay interest every November. And believe it, we pay principal every May.
And how much, what is, what are those numbers?
I don't have them in front of me. I apologize. I wish I could get that.
I don't have them because they all, one of them is USDA and the other one is the NFA. So, they're two different loan agreements.
It's roughly, it's, as I recall, over $2.2 million a year in debt service. So, that's off the top of my head. We'll be restructuring that down to what I believe was about 1.8 to 1.9.
So, as it sits now, how many years are we looking at?
We still have thirty years.
Thirty.
On the USDA, you own twenty years on the NFA. So, yes, I think we still, with this restructuring, have twenty years left. We're not shortening our time. We're just shortening, lowering our interest due.
Excuse me, sir. The, the payment is $2,072,000.
Total.
Thank you. I'm going to go on record saying, Mr. Lincolnth, you probably love me here in this room. It's finally picked up. It's a fair game. It's a fair game to staple your age. Pleasure, the commission.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-13, as stated in 12B. It's too long to read again.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion. Further call roll.
Commissioner Omera?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lincolnth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Hey, can I add to that? If you look at the, if you look at the USDA, the 18, there's the $920,000. And then, from the cumulative on the 1420, which is the 14 capital outlay, the 116th correctional, and the 116th infrastructure, the total of that loan is $2,072,200. So, the combination of both, those two is the total of the loan.
Okay, thank you. Alright, item C is Approval of Resolution 2018-14, A Resolution Adopting a Code of Ethics for the Management Team. Mr. Cordova and Commissioner O'Donnell has a comment once you finish your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is something we've talked about for quite a while. If I need to kind of formalize it in the sense of a resolution, I don't know if you would like me to read through the entire list again. I've done that in the past. It would be a little bit of a little bit of a confusion, but it would be something I'll take back to my management team meeting. And a few days later, I'll take it back tomorrow and ask the entire group of department heads and supervisors to sign off on. It's something we've worked with, we've worked on collaboratively over the last couple of years in our management team meetings, and feels pretty close to mirroring what the Commissioners have both approved and signed on to. So, I stand up for any questions, or if you would like me to read it.
Commissioner O'Donnell would like just, there's a typo, and then she would like to add one statement of transparency. If she would offer that up to them, if they would accept it. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Where it says handle all matters of personnel, personnel instead of personal. And I would like to add where it says, "A department head shall act impartially. After that, abiding by the principle of transparency and open government for all." I think it's necessary, somewhere we put transparency and open government for all. And I think it fits there where it says, "A department head shall act impartially, abiding by the principles of transparency and open government for all, and not give preferential treatment to any private organization or individual." I just thought it was important, open, that we include that. But I do have a question. If you're restricting, and I would like clarification, refraining from participation in the election of the Taos County elected offices. What does that mean?
Well, we're certainly not able to politic at work. So, that's just expanding on what I believe is the Hatch?
Hatch Act.
Hatch Act, Hatch Act, and just taking it a little bit further than, hoping that we would not be promoting one way or the other for or against any candidate for Taos County Commission or any elected office, either here or out in the public. That's just something that feels like not really our role as Taos County employees, although as private citizens, we always have the right to vote however we choose. But as a Taos County employee, I don't feel it is appropriate for us to be participating in the election or standing in the way of someone's election, either way. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it does, and I'd like our attorney to weigh in because I think it's a violation of people's civil rights. I think we can definitely restrict political, political activity at work, but what I hear you saying is say, Mr. Hill runs for reelection. She is out on Election Day campaigning. What I hear, or is at one of the precincts, holding up her campaign signs. What I hear is her employees who support her and are not coerced, but support her, are not allowed to stand out there with her with campaign signs. That's just one example. I did. I did, as best as I could, to search New Mexico rules. You know, I see this code of ethics tracks with the Governmental Conduct Act, but I could not find anything relating to that, although looking at, say, Alabama's title of the act, "No person in the employment of any city, whether classified or unclassified, shall be denied the right to participate in city, county, or state political activities to the same extent as any other citizen, including endorsing candidates and contributing to campaigns of his or her choosing." Now, this is Alabama. I searched, but I'm afraid that that one section is going to violate people's civil rights.
Well, this is what they want. And Cody, can I ask you a question? You may know, may not. The town of Taos has some kind of ordinance or something prohibiting their employees. Are you familiar with it and what your coverage on elections and stuff like that? I don't know if it's an ordinance or if it's personnel rule. Do you never run across it? Okay.
I just think this could be up for a legal challenge. I'm sorry. You know, just because what I hear is, does that example apply? If someone in a department head who's an elected official is campaigning, an employee can't go door to door to help them, can't hold up election signs at the precincts? That's how I read this. And I think it's a violation of civil rights.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the, it's, I think as an aspiration, it's okay, but you're correct in the sense that where we as a county government can prohibit such behavior is in the workplace or attempting to influence any employee of the county. The line gets a little bit blurry outside of that. I would encourage everyone to be very cautious about how they do that. We all know how county politics can be and how messy it can be. And if the right people win or the other people lose, it can cause all kinds of issues. But I do think we do have to limit our prohibitions to anything related to use of county property, county time, and county resources. That's kind of what the Governmental Conduct Act does, is focuses about on county time or, you know, you can't as a manager call up an employee and say, "Hey, I'm supporting so and so. Would you go help me put out signs?" Using your position as a manager with an employee, you can't do that. So there is a line there, and I think that that language maybe leaves it a little bit broad.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask our legal to rewrite that so there's some clarity there? I'd be happy with that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, can I suggest that just adding to the end of that, refrain from participation in the election at Taos County elected offices while utilizing any county resources or while on county time? Would you feel more comfortable with that?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, I will make that, I'll write that down and make that clear.
And also, I think it would be good to have training in ethical conduct. You know, basically getting someone from the AG to talk about the Governmental Conduct Act, which really this is kind of a shortened condensed version. And then, you know, have employees read that act. It's very specific of what you can and can't do. I just think at some point that would be helpful. I don't know, and I doubt it really, some of those things go on here, but you never know, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think that would be appropriate follow-up training for everybody. We have gone over the Governmental Conduct Act. We've handed it out and I think we've had training somewhat related to it, maybe not line for line. So I would be more than happy to follow up with training specific to that. We have done ethics training for our supervisors through our UNM supervisory course, and so that as well has been presented to the supervisors generally, not as specific. But now that we have this, we would be able to provide guidance specifically on our code of ethics.
All right. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2018-14, a resolution adopting a code of ethics for the management team with the change in the code of ethics to include abiding by the principles of transparency and open government for all, changing the typo and adding the language that was suggested, which I can't repeat right now. County time and.
And resources.
And resources.
And before we have a second, I would ask the commissioners, Sheriff Hopeur wants to make a comment, but after we have a motion and a second, he wouldn't be allowed. So please to allow him to make his comment after the second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2018-14, adopting a code of ethics for the management team with a couple of additions and clarifications. Sheriff Hopeur?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. I think the language change certainly satisfies most of what I was wanting to speak about. I still have one concern with that. If I chose to put a campaign sign of Mr. Gago's on my property in Red River, would I have to take that down during the time that I'm working? Would my deputies have to take a sign of mine down while they're working? What about the no decals on their personal vehicles? Are they going to be required to take those off? I guess I just want to make sure that we're very clear on the guidelines of this. And I understand this is a management team thing. Elected officials such as myself are exempt, although I would have the ability to sign the document as well. And I may, although I take a separate oath of office for.
Or you're the sheriff. So we could reaffirm ours and allow you, Susan, Anna, and Able to sign on to that.
And that may be the most appropriate direction on this. I just want to make sure that we're very clear that people's personal time, they have their independent rights to display signs on their own property, even though they leave for work in their incapacity, it's still displayed on their personal property, their homes, their fences, whatever. We have a very clear thing here, because the last thing I want to do is get into very muddy waters as we progress forward.
Left Randy and his key pair?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Sheriff, I think the key is that what those activities that you described are legal and allowed, and I don't think this would interfere with that. The difference would be is if they're coming into the workplace with handing out pamphlets or, you know, obviously, and I know you know the difference, so I'm not saying that, but that's where the line is. You know, anything that occurs that someone wants to participate in their democracy with, they have the right to do that on their own time.
I think that line is very clear to me. The other part wasn't. So you're saying that if I chose to put a sign of supporting Mr. Gago's on my property in Red River, I would not have to take that down when I go to work in the morning?
That's correct.
Nice. I think it's only, as long as, I would say, a deputy is not in uniform on his day shift, pounding out a wide sign, I think that's what we're trying to.
Wearing a glove.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to point out in that kind of whole section.
Yeah, I know the town has something.
I think it's clear and we've got the guidance going forward in the management team tomorrow meeting, and I think there's going to be maybe some discussion about it, and at least Anna better in form to support Mr. Cordova as he presents this.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I just want to make it clear, I agree, it's not in our purview to keep anyone from doing what they should be able to do within their rights. It's just as, I think everyone described here, we can't use county resources in any way, shape, or form to do that. So that's my goal, is just to make sure that nobody is taking advantage of the county resources or our county sheriff's vehicle with a sticker, you know, just those little things. That's exactly what we're trying to, we're getting at, eliminating one's rights and all. So thank you for clarifying.
Thanks. Yeah, I chose Mark to pick on because he's my district.
I applaud our department heads for taking this initiative. It's something I believe in. It gives, does something to write against you. On the purpose of this is to remind ourselves while we're here. And I applaud our staff for taking this initiative. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-14 with corrections and additions. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Thank you. And would you please convey to the staff that this is something that we are very proud of, to work with. Item D is approval of resolution 2018-16, a resolution accepting the revised land exchange agreement with labeled exhibits for the exchange of property between Taos County and the town of Taos, as approved by Taos County Resolution 2018-12.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is just the final step in what you saw last commission meeting when we authorized the donation of our property to the town. They had their meeting last two weeks ago, accepting that and donating their property to us. This resolution is to accept their donation of our behalf, finalize the transfer agreement, the land exchange agreement for a packet to be heard by the Board of Finance on Tuesday the 20th. So this is the final step needed to get our complete packet for the Board of Finance. As I understand it, will be placed on that agenda, the consent agenda. I still will, felt likely attend the meeting just in case they pull it, so we have the ability to defend any questions, but it's a pretty straightforward exchange and only the county is required to take this step of the Board of Finance. The municipality is not. So that's what this is. There was also a few minor changes, basically related to labeling exhibits, to make it clear exactly what exhibit was, A1, A2, and so.
I stand up for any questions and recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Also, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-16, resolution accepting the revised land exchange agreement with labeled exhibits for the exchange of property between Taos County and town of Taos that were previously approved in resolution 2018-12. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Okay, so Ted, we have those four documents to sign as well?
Yes.
Next item is item 13A, as updated county commissioner, very excited affecting Taos County. We'll try to listen to you over our stomachs growling, so go ahead.
I don't have a lot for you today, though. The first topic is pretty important. I just have a letter that we received last week from CYFD, children leave the county's department, more specifically their behavioral health services office. This letter is essentially denying our request to house a residential treatment center at the juvenile detention center. It was something we understood was going to be a challenge. We certainly did as much as we could to prepare a very thoughtful application, and we have support of one division of CYFD, but the behavioral health side has to ultimately sign off on where the residential treatment center would be, and they do have major concern about housing the treatment center within the detention center. So this pretty much puts an end to our path as we've been following it, and however, it does take us back to pretty much where I was a year ago, standing before the board, giving you my concern about the juvenile detention center and our ability to maintain that facility. The budget has not changed, and in fact, if anything else, there's constraints for us to add more staffing to be able to continue the level of service that we are trying to provide at the juvenile detention center. So we're faced with the same dilemma we were faced with a year ago. It is going to be difficult for us to maintain that facility, maintain running that facility. We don't have a lot of children, especially from our county, still in that facility. We're housing our neighbors, but not really our own. Our rates are still very low, and even if we raised our rates significantly, I don't believe it would give us enough revenue to get anywhere near the expenditures that we have on that. So it is another tough decision. I want to continue to gather more information. I'm not asking the board by any means to make a decision today. I just wanted to give you the letter update to as to where we are. Headwinds we've made and the preliminary work that we've achieved is still open for the opportunity to bring in our TC to Taos County. And so our collaborative group that we're working with in Nonviolence Works is still moving forward with the idea that if they had another facility, they could do this. Or we're going to reach out one last ditch effort to see if we did end up shutting down the juvenile detention center and having absolutely no detention children in there, if they would reconsider the idea of using the building in the short term until we find a better long term. That's one last grasp of an opportunity, but more than likely, we're going to have to have a, make a tough decision as we get into the budget cycle here because not only are there more demands for staffing on the juvenile side, there's certainly more demands for staffing on the adult side. I do see somewhat of an opportunity if we had to close the juvenile side to move those resources over to the adult side and only improve the hard work we've put into the adult side. We could provide better staffing. We could get an extra officer per shift plus continue to solidify our case management and trying to give more opportunity for warm handoffs as we get people out of the facility and into our community and reintegrate them appropriately. We can probably work with our contract on medical services. If we have a little extra money, we may be able to provide more service, more mental health, behavioral health services. So it is going to be something we'll talk a lot about next Thursday as well, about whether this is the direction we're going to take it. At this time, I feel like it is what we may need to pursue. The money that we need for the adult side is there on the juvenile side. We can really create a very different environment on the adult side if we took those resources. It does create an issue where we will have to transport our juveniles and house them somewhere else. So part of what we're looking at before I give you the full proposal to you is how much that would cost, what are our options, where would we be able to take our juveniles? Santa Fe does have a facility that would be most ideal for us, but there's also a facility in Clovis as well as Farmington, Santa Fe. And so those are the questions we're still looking for answers for. So not good news on the letter. They were very complimentary on the reference that we've taken, and we're not shutting the door on it at all. In fact, we had a good meeting yesterday with Nonviolence Works, and they're pursuing another program in front of this at this time to work with veterans, but that could still dovetail into our work with juveniles. So it's still very much on the table. There's also opportunity in the change of administration in here to see what a new governor and new cabinet might look at as an opportunity versus a hindrance. So just wanted to update the board on that.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, how they say, "Some battles are worth fighting," and you lose, so. But I do see an expansion of the adult detention for extra rooms for maybe even starting up some kind of business venture or a chapel. You know, we have no place for a chapel, but that one area that's currently the library would be expanded to great conference training. Right now, it's quite a small room where they train in, but that could be used. And then you have, you have a gymnasium, right, on the juvenile side that, I mean, we could think about what else we could use, you know, that side for. So, and you never know if we continue to get more inmates. Right now, our numbers have stabilized, but you never know, we're going to need those extra pods for the women or the men. So, you know, I think, I think it can be looked at.
Thank you for the suggestions, Commissioner O'Donnell. We're still looking at every option. What it does appear would work for us is to continue to staff that side of the building. So like you said, our numbers are stable right now. I would prefer to put the extra staff into the adult side as it's currently operating, but it would provide us opportunity and a place for overflow. Like you said, a special women's pod, special manager pods. So there's a lot of opportunity there for us and.
That would solve our problem with the special management.
Yes. It's not a large problem, but it can be when there's a large population. And having a better location for special management only improves our overall implementation of special management. Special management is just that, it requires a little extra thought and effort, and so that shouldn't be in a smaller location. It should still. that shouldn't be in a smaller location, it should still give the detainees the same space and meaning. There's no other questions on that. I will get into just a couple things on our calendar for our commission chambers. This Friday, PERA will be coming to provide a training, not just for Taos County, but we've invited all of our local entities that utilize PERA, El Valle, Alprado, all the municipalities, they've all been invited to come and hear about the different PERA options and as well as the deferred comp and your nationwide options. So that'll be this Friday in the chambers, two sessions, one starting at 10:00 AM and the other leaving at 1:00 PM. Also, next week, our state auditor will be coming to present the state audit rule training in our chambers the afternoon of March 22nd at 1:00 PM after our commission meeting. So if you know anyone that wants to know more about state audit rule, it'll be available. Moving on, we had a, we did issue a healthcare RFP, we had 11 respondents, 11 applicants respond. Last Thursday or Friday, we did group interviews. We can't get into much more detail, but it's certainly exciting. It's exciting to see how many people are coming out, many agencies are coming out seeking the funding that we had put aside. It's taken a few years to get this pipeline going, but we're certainly at a place now where I feel like we could get more money into the community, directly into the nonprofits and entities that are already providing the services, would now be creating a wheel, and there's a lot of great ideas, a lot of great potential there with these. So it's just exciting, and hopefully by the 22nd, we'll have recipients of the awards and be back when we go there as soon as we can. And then just a couple quick project updates, our second community center, the septic system began today, the replacement of that septic system, so we hope that that won't take much more than a week or two, and we can reopen that building for the public. And then Assam Peace School Volunteer Fire Department gets its final inspection tomorrow, so we're hoping to get a certificate of occupancy tomorrow, there's no concerns, and we can start parking trucks in there by the end of the week. As you saw earlier in the consent agenda, we did a work contract for Rio Fernando Volunteer Fire Department, and so that will get kicked off pretty soon. And then next Thursday, we can do our budget workshop and our regular meeting, we'll ask some requests for the senior building as well as the Costilla Volunteer Fire Department that is ready to be built as well. So exciting, a lot of projects that have been in our pipeline, it may feel like we're moving slowly, but we certainly are picking up steam. The other very exciting thing on our trip to Washington, we did get the opportunity to meet with all of our delegation, and CDDG was a top, a major topic, and I think we've got some really good support on renovating our historic county courthouse, especially under the very specific hospice we have allowed to us, which is ADA. But all of our delegation appreciated us focusing on that project. We also had very good conversations in regards to secure those schools, they understood the need for the funding, we were able to provide them our expenditures, our programs that we've implemented, we're utilizing that money, and they were pleased to hear that a lot of it was fire-wise communities, cleaning projects, the kind of things that are essential to our community, especially in this kind of year. They did ask how we were going to fund that without the SRS, well, what's going to come from Philpit, well, most likely, or some other source, because we cannot stop the effort. We've come too far to let it pass at this point, so without their money, we've got to keep on providing those services to our community. But overall, it was a pretty good trip to DC, I think I got more out of the visits than the conference itself, but the conference is still useful, and I think the most discouraging thing I heard, I have to be honest, was on the president's infrastructure plan, the trillions of dollars that are being proposed in the nationwide infrastructure plan, a lot of that money is going to end up falling back on the backs of local government, and that's what was troubling to me. Instead of a formula once upon a time where we would put 20% in, they'd give us 80%, they're looking the opposite. They want us to put 80% in and give 20%, and what they're offering in exchange is taking some of the regulations out of the process, maybe minimizing some of the environmental impacts and the costs that are associated with environmental research, and then shortening the time that we have to do it, they think that'll save us money. Not completely sold on that. So it is a little discouraging to hear that those trillions of dollars that are being proposed aren't really coming from the federal government, the majority of those trillions are on our back. So kind of what the state's done to us is what the federal government's trying to do now, is put the local governments on the hook for the expenses that are critical to the people that we serve. So, Ted, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Meara, when is the next cycle of CDDG? Hasn't started already?
It started, we attended an application workshop last week, Lori Montoya, who represents the county, attended that on Wednesday of last week, and we're beginning our application at this time. The applications are due, I believe, by June 20th, I believe is the date, and then they intend to hear any applications that are considered in front of the CEC and August.
So are we going to be holding community meetings for that?
Yes.
I did get a letter today, I don't know if you saw that, from the leading president of the Alprado Community Center, the Cardinal Sisters, and I sent that email to all of you. They basically want to be put on the list of possible candidates for CDDG funding for the Alprado Community Center. And so since that letter was sent to you in the form of an email, or maybe if you could respond to her advice to the minister, what the process will be?
Yes, sir, I'll take a look at that email, I haven't read it yet, but I'll take a look at it, I'll respond to it.
So when would they advise of possible funding awards for CDDG?
We would know if it enters the August, because we would have chosen that. We did get some commitments for support letters from our delegation, and so I think that would be very useful and helpful for us.
And what is the maximum amount of money that we can ask for?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand is the max amount. Our project has to be very specific to the ADA concerns that we have, and we may not have quite seven hundred and fifty those specific concerns, but if we do, we'll ask for the max, otherwise we'll ask for what is specific to our concerns.
So is currently building courthouse in our whole project?
That was, that's one of our hopes. We certainly got to have a public meeting, send it through the whole process, and see if the rest of the public agree, but at this time, that certainly feels like the best fit for us. We've been able to walk the building with local government director in Clovis, and just get everyone to understand how far we've come. You know, having architectural design complete is huge, and for any CDDG project, that is a very, that gets a lot of points in the scoring, as well as the matches that we have put aside and identified. So we should, certainly should score pretty well in our application, so that's our hope.
It's definitely been on my list for 24 years now.
Yes, understood.
The hurdle, would be the economic surveys, like where would Lori have to survey, you know, for the CDDG?
Most of the projects.
That's what makes this unique for us, we do not need to qualify through low to moderate income or economic development because it's ADA specific. What we need to do is demonstrate the need and who is not benefiting, who is unable to benefit. One of our ideas is reaching out to our, say, veterans groups, not forgotten, reaching need to see if they would be willing to draft the letter as to how they aren't able to, not every one of their members were able to enjoy and participate in any events that were to be available without the ADA compliance, things like that. And so I think that is our angle, it's a pretty unique angle, we've certainly vetted it out with the staff at DFA to make sure we're going down the right path, and they have confirmed that it is an opportunity for us, and I think that's why we're so excited.
It would seem the bathrooms and elevator would bring us pretty close to the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
We'll be very close, I think if we're not there, we'll be very, we'll ask for what we need to get those two items specific taken care of.
Commissioner Blankhart?
We can also make an application under the low income portion of CDDG.
If, yes, during our public hearings, if the project is identified that rises above this project and it does qualify low to mod, we certainly have the opportunity to pursue the...
That's not what I meant, you can't do parental track or two road.
No, no, it's the same pod.
Okay, we'll play it fine.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? All right. Oh, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I did have a...
Commissioner O'Meara?
Sure.
Sheriff reminded me that we are prepared tomorrow, I believe, afternoon to do a walkthrough at the site where they're going to do the tie-in for the natural gas. There's a walkthrough tomorrow afternoon, and then the tie-in, I believe, begins right after that. The walkthrough's going to consist of long force minute, fire OEM, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the process and that it's as safe as possible. We've been able to put a lot of input into it, and we're very grateful to New Mexico Gas for listening to the concerns brought up by so many parties. I want to thank Mr. Edward B. Hill of planning, who kind of coordinated that effort and really brought everyone together and all their concerns. We had requests for traffic plans from Public Works, I mean, I'm sure the sheriff weighed in very well to make sure that we just are providing not just the safety, but information to the public that are going to wonder what's going on when they see all these trucks lined up. So that walkthrough's tomorrow afternoon, early 1:30 at the site on C-110.
When is it going to, when is the actual connection going to take place, the transfer?
Tomorrow, they hope to be able to start right after that walkthrough. I think their intention is to start this week and as quickly as they can tie in.
Whether somebody, it'll happen eventually. It's going to happen successfully?
That's the goal.
Because I kind of overheard, I had a restaurant in Espanula about a week ago, some staff, people involved with this project, and they're a little afraid that we might get a repetition of what happened six, seven years ago when gas went out in Taos County.
Well, Commissioner, I know we are prepared for the worst case scenario, I would tell you that, Taos County, that is our biggest concern as well, and I think we would be prepared if need be to handle the situation, probably, no one's looking forward to that, but I know our OEM has certainly prepared us if need be.
Luckily, the weather has been pleasant in the warm case, it does happen. On that note, Mr. Chairman, a couple of meetings to go ahead and ask you about writing some sort of a letter or something to the highway department as well as the New Mexico Gas Company as to how they're going to deal with the results. I mean, the work itself is beautiful, it looks really nice, but the surface of Highway 68 is a mess, and there was a little bit of moisture this last week, and it just kind of highlighted some of those areas of the highway that have been broken because of all the traffic and all the heavy equipment that's been on them. And so, did you do that at all?
I have not completed that letter yet, Commissioner. We do have a presentation scheduled for April 3rd meeting with New Mexico Gas to give us a follow-up on it, and I think I'll have the letter completed, and you can hand them off if you're able to copy it.
This, what day is this?
April 3rd, our first commission meeting, April.
I was hoping that you would have done something two weeks ago so that we could have addressed it while contractors are still around.
I apologize, Commissioner, that is outside of our purview as a county, so I certainly understand your attempt, and I'm sorry I didn't get it done. Been very busy last few weeks, and I'll take full blame for not getting it done, and I'll get that work done this week.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, I did, when I did talk to Tim Cortez, that was the best date for them. They could not do it earlier, they could not do it on a Sunday, so...
Hopefully, it'll be done by then.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, I have a 14A is new business to be considered, a future being, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I have one that I've brought up for the last eight years at least, is the tower at the old National Guard Army. Every time I see Richard Arteleta, one of my friends from Taos Pueblo, they ask me about what the county is going to do about the tower. It's not in use, I know that it's owned by the Gonzales family, Javier Gonzales, the mayor, his brother, they're out of politics now, and I know that we had some influence in previous years from former staff that just left Taos County to leave it, that's related to the Gonzales family, and so just hoping that we can resurface that issue and put it on the agenda, have our law firm maybe review those documents as to whether or not we can continue some sort of a process to eliminate it from the property. Right now, it's an eyesore, it's never been approved.
A cell tower?
It's a, it's not a cell tower, it's a, actually, it is a cell tower, maybe, I'm not sure, but it's not in use, that I understand, it's just sitting up.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if we could get a cost analysis of what it would take to dismantle it, and maybe some of that could be recycled steel to see a profit.
It's, as I understand it, it's the responsibility of the person that put it up.
Who did? So... I thought it was our cell, because...
It's not, it's not in use.
Not in use.
Unless Richard feels different down here.
Just, Chairman Commissioners, just, we got over this once before, we did get it a year or two, had it taken down, I think it was about eighteen thousand dollars, it was Advance Tower Communications who gave us, some people who did help us with our nine one one tower and our facility. It did belong to somebody, and we have a lease with them, I think it's twenty-five dollars a month, and they have to pay their liability insurance, and as far as, the last time I checked, they were in compliance with their lease. I don't know if they are still, but a few years ago, when I was asked to...
So it's a twenty-five year lease?
I believe so.
So is it almost over? Is it, it was a sweet deal?
I think it was probably between ten and fifteen years left.
There must be a termination clause, please.
I think the clauses were all based on if they failed to keep their liability insurance and not pay rent and that kind of stuff. At the time that I checked it, they were current with their liability and any other...
Well, I would certainly like a legal opinion from our attorney on whether or not we can pursue removing it. It's not in use, it was never approved by Taos Pueblo, it's on their line of sight, and as far as I understand, the federal communications people have never approved it either, and so that could be a good reason to have it taken down.
Mr. Sánchez, could you send us a copy of that contract?
Right, I'll get us a copy of it, yes.
Okay. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like some sort of a commitment from our... He's writing it down, they don't have it, and I'm looking books here, and as soon as they find out the information on the lease, I trust what I've got will get back. Thank you.
Yeah, so it was put in around 2000, I guess, maybe a little before that. I worked on it when I was county attorney, we bought the FCC. No, I didn't do that. It was a sweet, it was a sweetheart deal, it was incredibly long lease for, incredible dollar amount, and we got the FCC come out here from DC, and we all went out to the pueblo and looked at the tower, and you could see how big it was from the pueblo, but the problem was that the pueblo was never given notice, and they were enjoying landowner, and so the FCC, it was Colin Paddal San who was running the FCC, it was got to his desk, and they said we can't approve it, and so it has never, ever been approved. My theory always was, since it couldn't be used for the purposes of the lease, that we could terminate it, but nobody ever really wanted to do it, nobody ever really wanted to go to the effort.
It's been, it's been a political hot potato because of the former mayor from Santa Fe and the relationship to the manager then, and it was just one of those things that happens in the public, it's kind of...
Right, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Morrison was manager, and so anyway, that's your little dog. I had nothing to do with it, it was, yeah, I tried my best to get it terminated, but really, the board didn't want to go to the effort at the time.
Okay, so this is eighteen years ago. So we got an eight and a twenty-four.
Twenty-two.
Why don't we go to do it between? Anything else?
Hopefully, we don't have to wait sixteen years.
Anything else? I have the commissioners' announcements, I will be in Santa Fe tomorrow, leaving at 5:30 for an eight o'clock meeting, multi-line. I don't think we're hearing anything of ours, or the manager would be requested to be going with me or the attorney, but, so I'll be there tomorrow, anything else?
I do have, Commissioners, you've probably seen in the paper, Taos, Santa Fe, New Mexican, issues that were brought up with regional coalition and its contractor, there was a meeting last week in which I attended, Commissioner Tendis O'Donnell attended as well. The concerns were that contractor was trying to get reimbursed for entertainment and alcohol purchases that were done through a conference that, I guess, it would be the executive board attended in Washington DC. We've all been to Washington, you know, it is kind of pricey anywhere you eat, you know, meal's going to be thirty dollars plus. We don't promote the idea of having alcohol on the ticket, it's going to be reimbursable. So the contractor did so and was brought through La Salmos County's finance department, which they are the fiscal agent. That put a flag up to find out if there was any other activity that had been going on. Mr. Romero, the contracting, the contracting company that's with the regional coalition has agreed, apparently to this day still, that she will be reimbursing all of those purchases back from her company. Which has led, the commission, coalition's discussion to readdress the RFP and go further with finding out who is going to be the contracting consultant that'll be coming up for the next RFP. And if the coalition has the title to enter the contracts, or if it's going to be contracted through La Salmos County. Taos County puts in three thousand dollars a year to be a part of the coalition, which is, does little benefit for the county in its entirety and the surrounding community. So it's not an issue that anybody contractually has gone through, or commissions gone through, or villages have gone through, towns. So I think it was just something that she felt was reimbursable, but under the contract and the arrangements, they were not. So it was, it was a bad decision by Miss Romero. We all go through those things, sometimes you assume that you, it's practice. And it becomes an issue after everyone having, it's pushing something like this. So I think the coalition still needs to have their mission, I think they may change for economic development and opportunity for small businesses to try and get work back up in the labs. So I'd hope that this commission will continue to support the coalition's annual fee and representation. This is something that was done by the contractor, not by the coalition themselves. There is an executive board goes through the financials and approves or disapproves any of those contractual arrangements. The rest of the commission, the rest of the coalition board is basically there to go through the meeting processes. They don't know unless, until something comes up that, like this, such as you ended, that gets brought to the whole coalition. So just for that, I'll do my due diligence and report. If there's something that comes up that does need county support and/or if there's something that's going on with the new contracts. But it was something that came up in the news, I think it was something that I was going to make sure that I had to come and report to you all regardless. Just like anybody else in the commission that has, carries a need on representing the county if something goes on with TC DC or comes up with finance. I'll report that, and I just wanted to make sure before I reported to you all that we had some identity of where the coalition's going to go and how they're going to move forward. That'll be probably in the next week or so, those meetings, and we'll be having to try and go up for RFP and restructure the contract agreement. So as soon as that gets done, I'll pass that, Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Donnell, buy your lunch?
She left, I think she was ready to buy lunch, but it was only known in center, so I'm glad we're there.
Can I start by, uh?
Hey Chairman, I'm going to miss the March 22 work study on the budget, but I will get a look at the budget and get any questions I have answered.
You'll talk about it.
Yeah, please come talk about it, come on. And there will be a regular meeting, but I understand that's not going to be too controversial, so I'm sure you guys will handle that, just fine. A little bit about DC, I think it was a good trip, there's a high level of confidence on the pilt. Being fully funded as it was last year, they're still working on the formulas a little, so no talent will be in 1.7 or 1.6 or whatever. But there was a lot of confidence that would go through, very little confidence on SRS. Parties are fighting over thinning forestry, I think basically nobody just wants to re-up it. It's been since 2015 now that we haven't gotten it, but I'm still doing some emailing with our representatives just for curiosity's sake to see how it's going. As the honor said, that's my law, Mrs. Van. And as the honor said, yeah, we did get some good support for CDDG, so you know, hopefully that will, that will come in handy. Nobody knew about the flat grant, but we're supposed to get some emails back to see if anybody's ever going to revitalize that. Also, quite a bit of talk about behavioral health, all our representatives say the right things, that we have to find a way to get the money to the rural communities. Of course, I had a good example for Congresswoman Lujan, the mayor, ex-Governor, how it broke down with the state controlling the funds. We had a perfect setup for detox, we had the building, we had a reputable operator with a good track record. The hospital was cooperating on acute patients and blood tests, all the kinds of things that made it difficult for the prior detox center. We had covered, but the state wouldn't come up with a couple of hundred grand a year. And they had purse strings and they wouldn't let them go even though we could promise them immediate results. So hopefully, that won't be the case in the future. There is quite a bit of money in both the federal government and the state government as the money flows down to the state. But we need to find a way to fund it to Taos County because we know what to do with it. So we had those conversations and we will see what comes of it. County manager was well-prepared for all our meetings and communicated hard needs well. I thought it was a good trip, and thank you for letting me go.
I should remember this, myself and Commissioner Romero got pilt every year we went and asked for it.
It's all right.
Pressure's on you.
It's on me, it was feeling pretty good. You didn't come up with any SRS money, I noticed.
I'm sorry, the conference was.
The conference was good. You know, I learned a lot, the breakfast was, the last morning breakfast was really good because not too many people showed up, both senators and both. Well, it wasn't necessarily that, it was just that you had better opportunity.
Best, smaller line, huh?
That's right.
I always feel that committee meetings and the stepping up stuff that happens on the weekend there is really good.
Well, I went to, yeah, anyway, the breakfast was good because all of our representatives showed up except for Congressman Pierce. But his chief of staff did show up, and he was a good guy, made some good contact with him. There weren't many people there, so you had good access. And there was plenty of food too, as Commissioner Gallegos suggested. I did go to a stepping up meeting, which I felt like was really stale, you know, it's just, there's nothing pragmatic at this point, you know. I was proud that we passed a resolution, and they had the whole list of all the counties who had passed a resolution, but it was nothing more than that. I did, I did learn, oh, this is it, I did learn a bit about behavioral health and what is working in other communities, not from the stepping up meeting, just from other discussions, but from a committee meeting. Yeah, and again, you know, the long-term case management seems to be the only effective way to go. And it's cheaper than detention centers and emergency rooms, so we obviously need some help before we can institute that. But hopefully, there will be some funds in the future, we can work with the hospital and make some progress.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, there's, sorry, there's some materials I'll leave in the Commissioner's office upstairs from the conference itself, the infrastructure plan. I referenced a couple other pamphlets from the sessions I attended, so, but to answer your question, Commissioner, it wasn't as useful as maybe in the past that I've attended. It wasn't, I guess, stale would probably be the best word, it kind of seemed like we were talking about the same things two years ago that we talked about.
And that, Mr. Chairman, is kind of one of the reasons, was my primary reason for not going this year. I've noticed the conference in itself is a little bit repetitive from the prior year. And it's unfortunate, I don't know why they don't change it up a little bit, new workshop themes or whatever, to make it a little bit more creative. I wish they would have done that.
Yeah, the weekend before committee stuff, I think, is great.
Yeah, that's a better part of it. Got a good point, thank you.
Commissioner?
Oh, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, an updated calendar schedule for the commission, if you could rely on us.
We'll get that out, Chief.
It would be, Mr. Chairman, it would be helpful to have all the boards, sometimes I just can't keep track of when our boards were going to meet, so if that's possible. Mr. Chairman, I might, Chairman from the north might need to pass that card to me. The governor did not veto the thirty thousand dollar appropriation for the Gorge Bridge that goes to DOT. So I appreciate that, that helps, I think we had a resolution that helped with the memorial that passes sitting on the bridge. So I'm excited, it's something, it goes in line with the resolution we passed, so I'm excited for that. And I don't know if it was put in your packet, I'm just going to quickly say what Taos County entities, what they got vetoed, okay? Just so you know, the vetoes, the DeFernando de Taos Land Grant Building was vetoed, El Prado Water System Improvements was vetoed. Lower Arroyo Hondo Mutual Domestics, that was vetoed. The Taos Pueblo Road Maintenance Vehicles were vetoed, and the Taos Yee Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant was vetoed. As well as the UNM Taos Land Grant Museeke Archives was vetoed, and we were the fiscal agent for that. So I did want to just mention that, so you know, and I, at least our projects did not get vetoed, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hearing nothing else, moving on to item 15, pleasure to the commission.
Would you have your chair, a second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you, anything else?